As most of you know, I'm your town moderator, Bob His. Welcome to this annual Fall Town Meeting of 2017. Having been advised by our town clerk, Susan Galvin, that a majority of our town meeting members are in attendance, I hereby declare that a quorum is present for the transaction of business and this meeting is now open. In keeping with tradition, we will start our meeting with the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Will the membership please stand and join with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Before proceeding with the business of the meeting, however, there are certain preliminary matters to be taken up. First, permission has been granted for certain members and personnel of the school committee, planning board, Board of Health, and other boards, committees, and departments who are not town meeting members to sit on the floor with other members of their respective boards, committees, and departments, upon the understanding, of course, that they will not vote. Hearing no objection from the body, such permission will be and hereby is accorded. Second, permission is granted to our crack staff at Milton Cable Vision up in the booth to televise these proceedings. Also, please note that there is two side aisle microphones here and here, each with three seats in the front on this side and that side reserved for those waiting to be recognized to speak. Third, I will now entertain a motion to continue to use the rules for the conduct of our annual town meeting in May as the rules for this meeting. There's a second. All those in favor? Opposed? The motion carries. This year, we will have several articles that will require a two-thirds vote, and I'll inform you of those before we vote on those motions. And I do have one announcement from our Americans with Disabilities Act coordinator. Fragrances cause significant adverse reactions in some people, such as migraine headaches. Products with strong fragrances include personal care products such as perfume, colognes, fragrance hair products, aftershave lotion, et cetera. Attendees at town meeting are requested to avoid products with fragrances. As an accommodation to persons with such adverse reactions and to allow safe and free access to the auditorium, the lobby, and restrooms, attendees at town meeting who are wearing products with fragrances or who think they may be wearing products with fragrances are requested to sit away from the section near the lobby area. So we're trying to reserve this area up here for those who have sensitivities. So let me briefly explain tonight's schedule. I'd like to begin with a short statement from the Director of Veteran Services, Kevin Cook. Mr. Cook could not be here tonight. He's had some mandatory training with the state. In brief, the Town of Milton and the Office of Veteran Services announced this year's Veterans Day observance, which will be held on Saturday, November 11, 2017, at 11:00 a.m. at Milton's Town Hall. Milton's Board of Selectmen and Director of Veteran Services, Kevin Cook, along with members of the Milton, I'm sorry, the American Legion Post 114, will conduct ceremonies to commemorate veterans past and present. Included in this ceremony will be the dedication of a POW MIA chair, which will be located in the foyer at Town Hall. It is a sign that Milton will keep a chair open for all our POW MIAs until they all return home. This year's ceremony will be to pay tribute. All of Milton's Vietnam veterans and Milton's challenge coin will be awarded to all Vietnam veterans in attendance. If you are a Vietnam veteran and would like to participate in this year's observance, please contact Kevin J. Cook at the Milton Veterans Office at (617) 898-4939. The ceremony honoring all veterans will begin promptly at 11:00 a.m. with a procession down Canton Avenue to Town Hall beginning at 10:30 a.m. If you have any requests, you may contact the Selectmen's Office at (898) 4843 for additional answers. A couple notes. You may have noticed when you walked in tonight, there was a legal-size spreadsheet filled with I chart-sized data. That was in response to a question that Mr. Morash asked at our May Town Meeting about the status of the town's revolving funds. So our town accountant, Amy Dexter, provided those answers, printed them up, put them up here in response to Mr. Morash's question, and henceforth, those will be included in the annual report, so that you'll have access to that information going forward. Second, I did have a request. I think you'll notice, we're trying to keep the documents here on this table to be only those pertinent to town business and sponsored by the individual articles, so to avoid putting in free coupons for dry cleaning and car washes. If you could put that stuff outside in the lobby, that would be much appreciated. I've got two short presentations tonight. The first recognized Mike Zulis, who, Mike is going to talk to something about forming a band. Mike, do I have that right, or am I slightly off?
Do you have a couple slides? Do you have a couple slides? No? Nothing? Is that on? Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mike Zulis, Precinct 3, Town Meeting Member. Oh, hello? Hello? Testing. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mike Zulis, Precinct 3, Town Meeting Member. And we may have it. That's all right. It's all right. Happens to all. So let me start while we're bringing up just a couple of slides. My request of all of you is that you answer in a clear, loud voice one question, and that is, is there anyone in this auditorium tonight who is unhappy with their Comcast internet? All right. Well, have I got a deal for you. The, oh, there it is. Can we have the next slide? The Milton Municipal Broadband Initiative seeks to energize residents, town officials, and institutions in town to look at and explore alternatives to Comcast internet. The Board of Selectmen has decided to form a committee to look into this, and we want to tap into the resources and to the talents in town to try to support that committee as much as possible. So if you're not familiar with the problem, the problem is Comcast internet. It is a monopoly, and as a result, when you have a monopoly, you have high prices, you have old technology from the 1880s, not the 1980s, the 1880s, which is Back to the Future Part III, not Back to the Future Part I. You have old technology, and you have less than stellar service. So what do we do about that? One solution is a municipal fiber-optic broadband network. And there is the solution. If we do that, everything will be great. We'll have lower prices, we'll have better technology, we'll have better service, we'll have, you know, three-day weekends, we'll have spring throughout the year, we'll have no traffic congestion, we'll have no airplane noise, and by golly, we'll have the cutest little park in East Milton Square that you ever did see. So anyway, our effort is to bring together people who are interested in that. So, next slide, please. We have a meeting next Monday night at the Keys Room in the library, lower level of the library, 7:00 to 8:00. Anyone who's interested in this idea and in helping out with this, please join us. Also, you can email MiltonMunicipalFiber@yahoo.com. You know, it just occurred to me, fiber optic is a lot like fiber in your diet, isn't it? How is that? How is that? Both fiber optic and fiber in your diet help to move things along a lot more quickly and a lot more smoothly. Thank you. Thank you very much. Yeah, I think I'm out with that. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
It's open-mic night here at Town Meeting. So I have just a short proposal I wanted to present to the body tonight, and this is not, that's not it, but we'll get it. Let me give you some background. So I'm coming up here so I can see the presentation, by the way. So I'm a member of the Mass Moderators Association, and I've been researching ways to go make our town meeting more efficient. And there's this concept called the Consent Agenda, and I wanted to introduce that concept to the body tonight, propose it as an idea for our May 28 Town Meeting, and I'm just trying to get this idea out in traffic and get your reaction to it. So let's see if my clicker works. So here's the definition. The idea is that a motion is made by the warrant committee to group a number of non-controversial articles together under the first article. And then, with some exceptions, there's an opportunity to vote on all of them at once. You can imagine what some of those might be. There's a partial list on the right of towns in the Commonwealth that have done this. So it's quite common across the state to see this published in articles. You could do a web search on any of these towns, and you'd find something called the Consent Article, the Consent Agenda, the Consent Calendar. There's different names for it. So what I did in order to see how this might apply to us is I went back to our May 2017 Town Meeting, where we had 52 articles, and I did some analysis. So first, you can see, I categorized them by type. We had administrative, we borrowed money, we had a lot of budget, et cetera. So there's, that first column of the total articles is 52. I then keep a record of who stands up to speak about an article, and I counted how many of those different types of articles had a speaker, and there were 32. And then I said, how many of you got up from the floor to ask a question? Because there was something about it you wouldn't know, you didn't understand whatever it was. And there were 43 where there were no questions involved. I then went to look for which of those articles could pass with a simple majority, just 50% versus the two-thirds for zoning, for example. And there were, if I can see my, I think it's 46 passed with a simple majority. So I then went across the rows and said, well, how many of these things had no speaker, no questions, and simple majority? And came up with about 17 different items that apparently the body felt were so easily understood and routine that they weren't worth taking up a whole lot of time, and you just passed them. So the idea would be that next year, if I can get my clicker to go, I would do the following. And this is just a proposal. I want to socialize this again. It's not locked in stone. Just want to get it out there. So the moderator meets with the warrant committee before the warrant is published. And based on all their interaction with the sponsors, they listen for which of these might be non-controversial. They gather those all in one Article 1, and they make a recommendation to approve all the non-controversial ones with one vote. Then we open up Town Meeting with Article 1, and the moderator would read through a short list, and I've got an example of what that looks like, of all the articles that are in the Consent Agenda. And if any five Town Meeting members raise their hands and say, I have a question, it's removed from the Consent Agenda and it's addressed in its normal order as a separate thing. Okay? So here's an example. So I went back and I had an imaginary May 2017 Town Meeting, and I pulled some texts from another town. So this is sample text. So it says, it's recommended, as you can see it here, blah, 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 that we'll vote as a group, five members can pull it out, and it'll pass with a two-thirds majority vote. And I listed on the right, I had to do a little renumbering, but these are the actual titles of the articles that I think have had no speakers, no questions, and were simple majorities. I pulled all the budget ones out, by the way. And if someone said, you know, I've got a question on Article 12, it would be removed from the Consent Agenda. We wouldn't vote on it. When we're all done, we vote on this, and we have a chance to maybe get a dozen, a dozen and a half articles done quite quickly. So what the Consent Agenda looks like, if I can just get the last click. Could you advance for me, Emily, please? This is a sample from the Town of Concord. It's pulled right from one of their warrants. So what you'd see is in Article 1, a quick report of, here's what the article is, here's what the recommendation of the warrant committee is, and here's their rationale for why it's in the Consent Agenda. It's just, it's housekeeping, it's accepting the report of the annual report of the town, it's that kind of thing. And then, the full detail of these articles is still printed in the agenda, so you can read them, hear the whole warrant committee's recommendation, the whole rest of the text is there to answer your questions. This is just a way to get some of the housekeeping done early. So with that, what's next? So I'm just, again, introducing this idea, looking for your input, but not tonight. If you want to find out if you love it, do you hate it? Bob, you're thinking way too small. Bob, you're thinking way too big. Bob, just please stop thinking, and let's get on to Special Town Meeting. So with that, just email me at our@townofmilton.org, and happy to have a conversation about this. With that, we'll proceed to Article 1, which is found on page 8. Article 1, "To see if the town will vote to amend the vote of the 2017 Milton Annual Town Meeting under Article 22, amending certain amounts as set forth in the table below." Again, as my practice, I'll just read the totals. So water enterprise revenue, the current recommended is $6,557,624. Addition reduction of 0, revised recommended $655,624. The water enterprise cost total, same number, $655,624, and the revised $655,624. And to act on anything related thereto. Let's see, does anyone wish to speak to this motion? Yes, sir?
Steve McCurdy from Precinct 7, Town Meeting Member. I rise in opposition. I think that while I would like to have a share of the $430,000 in my pocket, the same as everybody else, that there are certainly more compelling uses for that money. First of all, I think that using carryover money from a prior year to subsidize this year's rates does create a sort of a using one-time funds for a recurring cost issue, which, and if that bothers you from a financial perspective, it does me, there's the potential that next year, we're going to have to come up with an additional 430 to make that up. But in the bigger sense, the problem is, is that we have a management plan, a master plan for our water system that suggests that we ought to be replacing about 15,000 feet of pipe a year, and we're only replacing about 6,000 feet per year. And old pipe tends to crack, old pipe tends to leak. When it leaks, you're paying the MWRA for putting water in the ground, so it's just not a financially sound thing. Brakes are expensive, brakes are disruptive. We have about 20 a year. We've had 60 from the DPW's count over the last three years. And if you're still skeptical, we have several miles of unlined pipe in town, unlined cast iron pipe, and I brought a cross-section that I got from my friends at the Wasserman Water and Sewer. And that's what four-inch pipe can tend to look like after 100 years. It's tuberculated. If you can see the silver, that's the outside of the pipe, and in the middle, it's clogged up. So you lose pressure, bacteria and things can grow on all these surfaces, and it's not good. So we should be doing everything that we can to get toward that 15,000 feet and not making ourselves feel good in the short term by saving a few bucks. So again, I oppose this, and I hope you will vote with me. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Selectman David Burns.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. And first off, thank you to all of you Town Meeting Members for all the good work that you put in to make our government as efficient as it is. And thank you to the warrant committee and the planning board for all the hard work you've done on these articles. And thank you, Madam Clerk, for all the good work you've done. Mr. Moderator, I'd like to ask to recognize our Department of Public Works Director, Chase Berkeley, to speak in detail about this article.
Please do.
Chase Berkeley, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and Madam Clerk, and members of the warrant committee, the Board of Selectmen, and most importantly, Town Meeting Members. Very evident to me in my short time here since July as Public Works Director that the town, members of, residents of this town go above and beyond when it comes to public service and offering their own time. So I just want to let you know, it is recognized that everyone in this room is here because they have a duty to civic service, as town employees do. So thank you for that. This article is, as Mr. Morash said, taking excess revenues from fiscal year 17 and using them to offset what would be a necessary increase in water and sewer, in water rates only, due to MWRA increases. So when you're an MWRA community, particularly Milton, where we are, both water and sewer, your biggest debt service is your bill from the MWRA. So in general, if MWRA raises the bill, we need to raise the bill to compensate for that. So what happened in fiscal year 17 is sales exceeded what the water rates were designed to raise in revenue, and we attribute that mostly to the drought conditions we saw the previous summer. So we sold a lot more water than we normally do, and we also sold water at the highest tier, which is where it's the most expensive. So we have a system in place where, as you purchase more water, that water becomes more expensive per gallon. So as a result, we earned more money on that most expensive water than what was planned the previous year. The difficulty in setting water rates is you have to use last year's information and predict what's going to happen the following year. So there's always a balance, and sometimes you hit it right, sometimes you fall short, sometimes you go over. When you fall short, we have surplus revenues or reserves to cover those shortfalls in the Water Enterprise Fund. In this case, where we exceeded our target revenue, we could choose to put that money back into the surplus, or in this case, we are choosing to, or asking to, apply that money to what would be a necessary rate increase. So I just wanted to outline our thinking behind this. We used the same rate consultant this year as we have over the past decade, and these recommendations have been vetted through their rate modeling and agreed upon and were presented to the Board of Selectmen and voted upon unanimously.
Mr. Berkeley, could you speak a little closer? Some people have trouble here.
Yeah, actually, I'll send, so, yep. Just on a side note, this is my very first Town Meeting, so thank you for being so welcoming. And thank you to everyone who has welcomed me in the town.
Mr. Mullen, you recognized him?
Peter Mullen, Precinct 2. In the comment, it says that the retained earnings balance in the Water Enterprise Fund remains at a prudent level. I wonder if somebody can tell us what that level is, and whether we're turning back half the retained earnings or a small percentage, what that number is.
Mr. Berkeley, do you have an answer for us? Thank you.
See, nobody told me the rule, don't go back to your seat till it's over, right? So in round numbers, our retained earnings right now are about 40 to 50% of our operating budget. So sound accounting practices say we should run 5 to 10% of our operating budget. So we are, it's a non-authorized number, but the number is about $3.4 million in surplus. In our fiscal year 18, operating costs are 6.5, the number's up there, million. So the 430 is the percentage of 3.4 million.
Anyone else wish to speak to this article? Mr. Mahalchuk?
Mike Mahalchuk, Precinct 7. I just want to know if Chase, you could respond to what Steve McCurdy said about the miles and miles of clogged-up pipes that are leaking all over town, the progress towards ameliorating
Yeah, so it's no hidden secret that the infrastructure in this country is dated and is in desperate need of funding, and we hear it at the local, state, and national levels that, you know, infrastructure stimulus is a very important topic. So Milton is no different than any other town or similar city in this area of the country, being when the pipes were installed and what shape they're in. I think the important thing is to recognize there are creative ways to fund that work, and there are opportunities where grant money and 0% interest loan money can be sought after to put towards that. And this rate recommendation does not change our capital plan, or does not reduce our capital plan for what it was intended. But as the new Director of Public Works, I will certainly be seeking to look at every way we can increase the amount of pipe we replace and rehabilitate.
Anyone else wish to speak to this article? This requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries. Article 2. Ladies and gentlemen, you should have picked up, up at the table, a white sheet of paper, which is the revised recommendation for Article 2. So just an explanation, you would notice in the warrant that the warrant was printed with one version of Article 2. The Town Government Study Committee made some structural edits to it. Town Council reviewed those, I reviewed those for scope. I determined that they are within the scope, since they left the intent of the article as published in the warrant intact, but merely changed the structure of the wording by moving paragraphs around primarily. They brought that to the warrant committee, I think it was a week ago, Monday. The warrant committee approved the new wording. That means it's accepted as a friendly amendment, does not require a vote. So this is the new replacement that you should have handed out up here for the Article 2 printed in your warrant. So with that, it's a lengthy article. I would entertain a motion to waive the reading. All in favor of waiving the reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
We will waive the reading. So with that, I'd like to recognize Rick Neely, who's the Chairman of the Town Government Study Committee, in order to be able to speak. Ah, we're out of handouts.
They were mailed out last week.
They were also, I'll also note, they were also mailed out to you all last week, and I think they were, emails were sent around to every Town Meeting Member that has an email address on file with the Town Clerk. email address on file with the town clerk. And we're now displaying the revised version up on the screen. We should be as well. Yes, Mr. Neely.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, members of town meeting. Want to give you a little background in terms of why we have this article before you tonight. The history of this is that you recall that the Town Government Study Committee requested that the Department of Revenue come in, and the Board of Selectmen agreed to take a look at all of town government. And you recall there was a report, which I have here, and you've heard about in the past. And in that report, the Department of Revenue, one of its many recommendations was, in looking at the structure of town government, had a recommendation with regard to the HR roles and duties in town government. And it included, for example, expanding the responsibilities of the existing Assistant Town Administrator for Human Resources. In that recommendation, quote, "On filling the human resource position, the board's work would be duplicative and it could be eliminated." That was sort of the genesis of why our committee took a look at this discussion and looked at this article. And we began some of this with a discussion with the then-chairman of the Personnel Board in November of 2015. He came to our meeting, and we talked about the Personnel Board, what the duties were, and what the vision for the future was, and what changes would be needed, if any. After that, we met with the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen at that time and the then-Town Administrator, and we discussed a number of topics for our committee to look at. Included was the Personnel Board. So we took that as one of the topics we were looking at, and over a period of the last 19 months, we've been reviewing the way other towns have maintained, or changed, or continue to have a Personnel Board or Human Resources Board. And you have to understand that the history of the Personnel Board is that it goes back some 60 years. So the Chapter 13 article was created back in the 50s, in the days when there were no unions that bargained for the employees' wages and salaries and benefits, or had the grievance procedures that are in the contracts. In those days, the town had no professional management. There was no Executive Secretary, which was created in the 60s. There was no Town Manager or Town Administrator. What's really happened over the last 50 some odd years is the Executive Secretary position was created, and it became a Town Administrator. This body, in the last couple of years, approved an expansion of the duties to a strong Town Administrator, and that's the model of government we have today, along with an Assistant Town Administrator for HR, along with the other addition of professional positions for the Town Management. Next year, we'll in addition have five members of the Board of Selectmen in addition. That's another change that was approved by this body and by the voters. So as we looked at all of this, we looked at what other towns are doing. We looked at a series of towns that have some comparability to the town of Milton. And we went through, and we determined, after hearing what the Department of Revenue had to say, are towns eliminating the Personnel Board? And in some cases, the answer is yes. And in three corporal examples, Situate, Denham, and Westborough, they did do that. And there were a number of other towns of smaller size where they've also recommended that. But in terms of comparability, those three were eliminated in the cases where they were eliminated. In other cases, the Personnel Board has stayed the same. So there were three towns, Belmont, Holliston, and Hingham, that stayed the same. But we found that there were seven towns, Brookline, Westwood, Needham, Amherst, Redding, Sharon, Westford, where the Personnel Board became advisory. So the overwhelming evidence is that the Personnel Boards are not staying the same as they were 60 years ago. They've become more advisory on human resource matters, and really providing an assist on areas that currently are not in the Personnel Bylaw. If you look at the Personnel Bylaw, the existing Bylaw, again, there's no reference really to the collective bargaining. There's no reference to diversity. There's no reference to affirmative action, and there's no reference to the setting of goals and providing advice on current human resource practices. We really think that that's a case where this Bylaw change before you will actually increase the role of the Personnel Board in providing those duties, while at the same time making it an advisory board and not an operational board. So that's really the history of what we've done. We really, along the way, we did meet with the Personnel Board. We did meet with them in January of 2017, after that initial meeting with the Chairman back in November of 2015. We had sent them the document of the changes at that time. We reviewed the changes with them. We listened to them that night. We made changes. We're not 100% in agreement. You'll hear that tonight. There's not 100% unanimity on this. But we did make changes, and we held off and did not bring it to the last town meeting because we didn't think it was ready, and we deferred it. In April, I met again with the Chairman of the Personnel Board. Our whole committees met at the Personnel Board in June, after sending him another revised document. We've continued to try to work together, but there are some philosophical differences that you'll hear about tonight. But we believe that an advisory board is the direction to go, and that's the recommendation before you tonight, and I'd urge your support of this recommendation. Thank you.
Does anyone wish to speak to this article? Mr. Reardon?
Mike Reardon, Precinct 2, Chair of the Personnel Board. We had Mr. Neely go. We do, we agree, we disagree in principle. We certainly would agree that there are some updates necessary to the Personnel Board Bylaw. Our fundamental disagreement is this, it's one of principle, which is this is a moderator-appointed committee. Therefore, it provides a basic check and balance to government. The strong Town Administrator legislation was intended to give the Town Administrator the authority that the Board of Selectmen had on daily operational basis. Operationally, the Assistant Town Administrator is doing the functional HR work. To get rid of the oversight, and if you read the article, it says, "We'll still get all the information, we'll still look at it, but if we notice a problem, we can't do anything about it." Now, if everything were working fine, I would still have a problem with that. Just two weeks ago, we received something, and it wasn't correct. We had to send it back. That's a good collaborative approach. So essentially, we're being told, you're going to be an advisory board, but without any authority to notice anything or do anything. I think it's fundamentally bad government. We're appointed by the moderator. I don't think the intent in creating a strong Town Administrator was to take the authority away from the Town Moderator and therefore the legislative side of government. Process-wise, this went through, as Mr. Neely stated, all well and good. When it first went to the Warrant Committee, the original recommendation was to have it go back to the Personnel Board with conversation. Go back for remanded for further study, and to go back in conversation with the Personnel Board. We had that meeting on September 11th. The next time I heard about it was on Friday, October 13th, when I received an email at 4:00 saying that there were revisions to the amendments to the article, and that they were going to be meeting with the Warrant Committee on Monday at 7:00 PM. I don't understand the urgency to this. If you read the original recommendation, it was very thoughtful on the Warrant Committee's part. Hey, go back. We think, we would all agree, changes need to happen, but let's do it in a more thoughtful, collaborative way and address those things. So on principle, I don't think it's a great idea. On process, I don't think it's a great idea, and I don't think it serves the original intent in conversation. And I don't understand the urgency. I don't see what is being resolved here. So we have a principle disagreement.
Oh, you have a, you're not wishing to speak. I'm sorry.
Leroy Walker, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 10, and member of the Town Government Study Committee. Just a little bit on the principled disagreement that we have and the question of urgency. As Chairman Neely outlined, this has been a discussion that has been going on for some time. We met with the Personnel Board several times, and when we met with the Warrant Committee, they gave us some excellent feedback, both with regard to the technical nature of the document, that is, how readable or accessible it was, and also some questions about the substantive changes that we said needed to be made. This is a discussion that we've had with the Personnel Board, as you've heard, over the last year, and we have agreed to disagree. So we did try our best to keep them informed. At no point did they say, okay, well, we can live with this, or we can live with that. Essentially, since the beginning, they've said, we disagree about the changes to our role. But let's talk a little bit about legislative versus executive. As Mr. Neely has outlined, the town meeting has made several decisions that are critical for the future of the town. The first was to create the strong Town Administrator role. In creating that role, the acknowledgement was that we should create a role that had hiring and firing authority. Second, just recently, town meeting decided to increase the number of selectmen from three to five, again, expanding the scope of the executive authority. The legislative body of the town is you. Yes, there are several appointed committees that provide you with information and have a role, but in this case, the role of the Personnel Board needs to change. And the reason is that it was created to solve a problem that no longer exists. That problem was that we had a large number of non-union employees. We didn't have as many bargaining units as we do now, 50 years ago. And the commitment that the town made was to create a body that should oversee both the benefits discussions and the terms and conditions of employment for those individuals. That was over 100 individuals 50 years ago. It's now 12. The second point, and the most important point, is that at that time, the town government was very different, and the Personnel Board had the role of overseeing every single hire and passing judgment on every single hire, not reviewing a range of candidates, reviewing the paperwork for a single individual and saying yes or no. That is a structure that is woefully outdated. The reason is that we now have a strong Town Administrator who has the authority to hire and fire, we'll have five selectmen, both of whom have the ultimate executive authority. The question is, do we still need a Personnel Board that needs to look at every single hire? I think if you talked with department heads, they would say emphatically, no. But what we tried to do is to maximize, and as an HR professional myself, maximize the benefit and value that the Personnel Board can bring. And that's in an advisory capacity, advising on trends. We inserted the responsibility about collective bargaining planning. That's an area where I think they can play an important role. We inserted the responsibility about making sure that they provide advice and oversight in the areas of diversity and equal employment. And there are a range of areas where good HR expertise can be brought to bear, but it was our very strong feeling, and that of the Warrant Committee who supported this, and that of the Selectmen who support this, and that of the new Town Administrator who support this, that the best structure for the town going forward is one in which we let the executive branch do the job that we've either elected or appointed them to do, and provide good oversight and advice, just as some other committees like the Audit Committee do. So I would urge you to support this recommendation. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. David Burns, Precinct 2, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. We met extensively with the Town Government Study Committee, and that committee is comprised of several former selectmen, a lot of experience, school committee chair, Warrant Chair, and they did due diligence on this. You, the Town Meeting Member Voters, you voted to go to a strong form of government, which was great, and we appreciate that. This is about efficiencies, and for us to be effective, we need to stay with the times. This isn't just a quick, you know, jolt thinking, let's do this now. This is about moving our government forward, and I think that, you know, the town meeting has been very responsive to that, and I think our Town Administrator was hired to make decisions. And I think the Personnel Board has an incredible amount of value still in this role. It could be on job classification, it could be on many different types of things, drawing up, you know, certain types of, whether or not it be information on new jobs, but it's really about efficiencies. And I think that it's important for us to recognize that we need to keep moving this forward. By sitting on it, it's going to slow us down. So I want to let you know that, you know, we did vote unanimously as a board. We feel very strongly about this, and we feel that the Town Government Study Committee did a thorough, thorough job in recommending this article. So I urge you to vote aye. Thank you.
Mr. Schroth?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Frank Schroth, Precinct 2. This is my first time suggesting an amendment. I suspect that listening to Mr. Walker and Selectmen Burns, this might be a friendly amendment. Should I just walk through it and then? Okay, so fellow Town Meeting Members, Selectmen, Warrant Committee, I also prefer writing to speaking, so bear with me. I rise to amend the proposed article as follows. Section 3B, delete paragraph 4, which reads, "The Personnel Board shall approve the creation of new employment positions in town departments and advise the Warrant Committee on the same." Section 7A, delete this part in its entirety, which consists of the following single sentence, "The total number of persons employed by the town, temporarily or otherwise, shall not be increased without the approval of the Personnel Board." The primary reason for proposing this amendment is that, in my opinion, an appointed board should not have decision-making authority over an elected board. Department heads from time to time will make a case for personnel resources. These requests have a rationale that is reviewed by the respective board, or, in the case of the police, fire, et cetera, the strong Town Administrator. If they agree with the request, that will be folded into their budget presentation, and they will go and take their chances before the Warrant Committee, which is no small hurdle. Requiring a director to appear before the Personnel Board adds an unnecessary bureaucratic burden, adds little value to the processes currently defined, and does not provide a check and balance as much as it does give that committee a veto. I realize this requirement existed prior to this rewrite of the Bylaw, but this represents an opportunity to put the authority for new hires where it logically belongs, with the strong Town Administrator and the directors and boards elected to govern our institutions, cemetery, library, and parks. I should note that in the introduction that accompanied the revised article, under changed duties, the last bullet reads, "Personnel Board would no longer approve each individual appointment or promotion, but would review and audit trends on a regular monthly basis." I do not believe the language of the article is aligned with the introductory statement, therefore I propose this amendment. I thank both the Town Government Study Committee and the Personnel Board for their attention to this article and their service to the town.
Mr. Schroth, were you recommending that as a, requesting that as a friendly amendment? Or?
Yes. If it's not accepted, I would like it to go to a vote.
Yeah, in that case, we need to consult with the Town Government Study Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. David Burns, precinct two, chairman of the board of selectmen. We do believe it is within scope, and both the Town Government Study and the Board of Selectmen are agreeable to that friendly amendment.
And, Warrant Committee? So, all just while the Warrant Committee is voting, let me remind the audience what Mr. Schroth proposed as a friendly amendment, which the Town Government Study Committee and the Selectmen have accepted, which is why it didn't need a second, so in effect they appealed directly to them. So, if you go to page, let me get this right, page six of your handout, pardon me, let me start with, sorry, page two of your handout, you'll see section three at the top, subsection B, that says Authority of the Personnel Board. If you go down to the bottom, the third paragraph from the bottom is recommending to be deleted. That's where it says the Personnel Board shall approve the creation of new employment positions. Ms. Mark, can you put this, this section up? Can you put up page two? Apologize, Mr. Morash, we're, have technical difficulties, so please sing along with me in your hymnal, so. So, if that's clear on page two, we're going to remove the third paragraph from the bottom at page two. Second, flip to page six of your handout. Go to section seven in the middle, subsection A, the proposal, the motion is to remove paragraph A in its entirety. So, page two. Excellent point. So, we have a question, pardon me a sec. in section three and seven to be renumbered alphabetically with the removal of those two Folks, we'll have a quick report from the Chair of the Warrant Committee on their recommended, acceptance or rejection of the amendment.
Mr. Moderator, Mr. Moderator, the Warrant Committee does not accept the amendment.
So, so folks, now, what we have before you then is an amendment that I haven't heard a second for yet.
Seconded.
Now seconded. So, at this point, yes, Mr., I'll get to you, sir. Just explaining to the group, what's before us now is the original document with an amendment to delete those two paragraphs that has been put before the body and seconded. We're now going to debate that amendment, not the overall article. Is that clear to everyone? So, we're just debating the deletion of those two paragraphs and the alphabetic renumbering of the others in those sections. Does anyone wish to speak to the amendment? Yes, sir.
Frank Giuliani, precinct three. I'm a little confused, so you have to help me out. If, if we eliminate the paragraph that says the Personnel Board shall approve the creation of new employee, employment positions in the, in the town department and advise the Warrant Committee on the same, that's, that's one of the paragraphs I guess you're going to take out.
Again, yes.
On page two. And then, the other, the other paragraph you want to eliminate is section A, section seven A, where in fact it says the Personnel Board is not involved with a number of employees. So, who will decide if, if we're going to have a new position? Is that the town administrator? If a new position comes up, the town administrator alone, without any oversight, will determine? That's the question I have, so help me out, would you?
Mr. Burns, do you have possible answer to that? Yes, Mr. Neely, do you have an answer to that?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Rick Neely, Town Meeting, precinct three. The effect of that would be for the Warrant Committee to approve the creation of new positions as part of the budget process, and in effect determine the total number of The Warrant Committee, as part of its budget deliberations, would be approving the creation of new positions and the funding of those positions, as that would be the effect of this amendment.
Does anyone else, Mr. Morash, I'm sorry, Mr. Neely, you're still answering?
After the town, after the Warrant Committee makes his recommendation, Town Meeting ultimately would make the decision.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Neely, Mr. Morash?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Steve Morash, precinct two, totally confused. I don't understand it, Mr. Moderator. We had a friendly amendment by my friend Frank that was accepted by, I believe, the government Town Study Committee and the Board of Selectmen. Is that not, so now I understand this, the Warrant Committee that has supported this previously is now telling us they do not support this amendment at all?
That's correct. They, they don't support the amendment.
I don't think they have a say on the amendment.
No, what they're saying is, because they don't accept the friendly...
But I don't, Mr. Moderator, point of order then. Does the Warrant Committee have the right to accept or reject a friendly amendment by the committee?
You know, I will double check and make sure I'm right. Please stand by. Ladies and gentlemen, I have an answer. I conferred with the Town Council and 14 years of Milton Town moderator, and here's the process that they, we've all agreed on, that for a friendly amendment to be accepted as a friendly, then one of you proposes as a friendly, the sponsoring bodies, which is the Town Government Study Committee and the Selectmen, both have to agree to accept it as a friendly, and then they agree that the Warrant Committee has to accept it as a friendly. If they do, there's no vote on the amendment required by the body, and then we proceed with the rest of the discussion. However, since the Warrant Committee said, "No, they do not accept it as a friendly," then it cannot be a friendly amendment, and now it reverts to you as a body to decide to vote on just the amendment or not. Does that make sense? That's where we are right now. Is that clear, Mr. Morash?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My question then would be, could we have an explanation from the Warrant Committee as to why they do not accept this as a friendly amendment? Thank you, sir.
Absolutely.
The consensus of the Warrant Committee, ladies and gentlemen...
Mr. Asher, could you introduce yourself and...
I'm George Asher, I'm chairman of the Warrant Committee. The consensus of the committee was the change being proposed is substantial, and without further time to deliberate, we did not feel comfortable as a committee approving it on your behalf. It's your decision ultimately, but with, with the magnitude of the change that it does engender for the, the amendment as it's been presented, the revised information that you all received in the mail, we did not feel comfortable approving it by majority.
Thank you. Mr. Walker, I think you were next.
Just a little more context, Leroy Walker, precinct 10, Town Meeting Member, member of the... Let me try it again. Leroy Walker, Town Meeting Member, precinct 10, member of the Town Government Study Committee. A little more context on why the Town Government Study Committee and the Selectmen felt that this friendly amendment should be accepted, and a little surprised that the Warrant Committee decided not to support it for the following reason, that if you look at section four, last paragraph in that section on page four, under Administration of the Town Administrator Authority section, one of the, I alluded earlier to the excellent feedback that we got from the Warrant Committee. One of the most substantive changes that the Warrant Committee asked us to make was with regard to the question of whether, with the structure that we were posing, whether the town administrator could in fact overrule an elected or appointed board. They felt very strongly that the town administrator should not be able to do that. Thus, we inserted the language, which is the last sentence that says, "In instances where an appointment is recommended to the town administrator by an elected or appointed town board, commission, or committee, such appointment recommendation will only be altered, returned for further consideration, or denied where the town administrator determines that a town personnel policy or practice has not been followed."
Mr. Walker, could you point to page and chapter, paragraph you're reading?
Section four, last paragraph on page four.
Page four.
Last sentence, which begins with... Last sentence, which begins with "in instances where an appointment is recommended." So, the gist of that was to ensure that the town administrator could not overrule an elected or appointed board. These two amendments are entirely within the spirit of that same objective. So I'm a little surprised that the warrant committee, who urged us to insert language clarifying that, in this case, doesn't support the amendment, but I would urge you to all vote in support of the amendment. Thank you.
Mr. Reardon?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mike Reardon, precinct two, chair of the personnel board. Two quick things, I just want clarification, if I understood that, that the warrant committee would actually make the decision about a new position? Is that correct? So my question would be, who would approve the position? That was my, I think, the question, was that...
So your question is not a funding question, but approving the creation of the position?
Correct. So I'm just unclear on who would actually approve the creation of the position.
Mr. Neely, do you have that answer?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Rick Neely, town meeting member, precinct three, chair of the town government study committee. The process that would be followed should the amendment be adopted would be that the warrant committee would have to fund the creation of a position submitted by a non-school department. If the warrant committee funded a position that was requested by a department, the personnel board would have to approve the classification and the job description for that position, so that the personnel board would still have a role in determining whether the position should be a level five or level six, and in fact, how it fits in to the structure of the overall positions. So there still is a role, it just is in this initial stages of the process preparing the budget. So right now, there is a stage in the budget process where the personnel board participates, and this amendment would eliminate that particular phase.
Mr. Reardon, is this a follow-up question to that?
It's in response to that as a, because I didn't, now I can make my point, because I just wasn't understanding the process.
I see, okay.
It wasn't clear to me. So in doing so, what's happening is the personnel board will, the money will be voted on for a position, whether the need has been determined or not, and then after the money is determined, the personnel board would then look at it. It seems a little backwards to me. The other piece is there are very functional things. Twice this year, in the last fiscal year, two positions came before us. One was an elected body. They asked for a new position. We asked, would you structure your organization this way? They said, no, but the two people in the position aren't doing what they should be doing. We denied that position. One of our roles is that town government is a small business, people work really closely together, it's hard to say no sometimes, and it's easy to kick the can down the road. So that's one reason that I oppose this friendly amendment.
Does anyone else wish to speak to this motion to amend? All right, Mr. Mullen?
Peter Mullen, precinct two. Half of the town government is not covered by this bylaw. The entire school department is exempt from the bylaw. If there's going to be a new position in the school department, the school committee recommends it as part of their budget, it gets reviewed by the warrant committee, and it ultimately gets voted by the town meeting. What this amendment would do is apply that concept town-wide. Really, the central question to this whole dispute between the personnel board and the recommendation that's before the body is who should have final authority with regard to approving a position? Right now, as the bylaw exists, the final authority to approve a position is with the personnel board. Normally, what they do is they, after some, after a department or an elected board has decided who they want to hire for an opening or a new position, they send that name and the person's resume to the personnel board. The person, it drags out the process of hiring somebody usually to the order of magnitude of 30 days. The personnel board doesn't see the other candidates who have applied for the job, they're not making a decision about who's the best person. At most, they're saying, the process that was followed seems to be appropriate, and this person seems to have the qualifications for this job. In the name of efficiency, the thought is that the town administrator should be able to supervise the hiring of staff within the town. If there's problems, the information is going to go to the personnel board, the personnel board can take it up with the town administrator, and if unsatisfied with that, they're obligated under this proposed bylaw to report any issues that they have to the town meeting. It's a question of efficiency. We need to adopt this. I urge a yes vote.
Mr. or Ms. Hodland? Just a second, need a mic.
Christine Hodland, precinct two, town meeting member, and I'm a trustee of the board of the library. I am in, rising in support of this amendment. The library director and the board of trustees for the library are the most qualified people to determine what positions are needed by the library. In the past, we have presented those positions and have to wait until there is a personnel board meeting to present to them our positions. In several cases, they have been refused, in several, they have been approved, and I don't quite understand what, how the personnel board would have any more information on who or how the library should be run than the director and the trustees after they've approved and reviewed that. So I urge you just please support this amendment. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak to this amendment? Okay, I'll just remind everyone where we are. So before the body, we have a motion to remove on page two, section three, subsection B, the third paragraph from the bottom of page two, that says, "The personnel board shall approve the creation of new employment positions in town departments and advise the warrant committee on the same." There's no reordering required in that subsection B. Second, the motion is to turn to page six, subsection seven, that's labeled miscellaneous general provisions. The motion is to remove the first paragraph, A, "The total number of persons employed by the town temporarily or otherwise shall not be increased without the approval of the personnel board," and to renumber the remaining paragraphs in section seven alphabetically. This requires a simple majority. All those in favor of the motion to amend, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.
No.
The motion carries. Now, you now have before you an amended article here. Does anyone wish to speak to now the approval of this article? I think, yes, ma'am. If you wish to speak, just please start working your way down, and I'll recognize you down at the front.
Vicky McCarthy, precinct eight, town meeting member. I'm just curious if there's a revised recommendation from the warrant committee on the article, because I just received the revisions in the mail today, and I don't see any recommendation.
Ah, okay, I should remind the audience. So when a body comes to the warrant committee after the article, the warrant is published, but before we come to town meeting, and the warrant committee accepts the new language, that becomes the recommendation to approve the new language that comes before this body. So the fact that the warrant committee approved what you have in your handout, now subject to those two amendments, a month, a week ago, Monday, would that be, sixteenth? That becomes their recommendation to you to approve the handout. Any other questions? I know it's confusing. Yes, Mr. Frizzetti?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Steve Frizzetti, town meeting member, precinct seven, and member of the board of cemetery trustees. I was just curious if we could get the warrant committee's recommendation as far as the amend, the article now that it's been amended?
We will. Yes, that's the last step, as I asked the warrant committee, are they now in favor of this article as recommended? That's always the last step before we go to a vote. Does anyone else want to speak? I don't see anyone rising. Okay, do you have a sense of the warrant committee, Mr. Asher?
George Asher, chair of the warrant committee. The warrant committee met with as many interested parties as wanted to come on two occasions. The history of this amendment is that we revised our recommendation following our October 16th meeting based upon the information that was provided. Mr. Neely came, and the warrant committee voted to accept and to recommend the revision that you have in your hand as revised. So the recommendation of the warrant committee is to accept the most recent article two that you have.
As amended?
As amended, you've amended it, so yes.
Yes. So the warrant committee approves the recommendation as amended. With that, this requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor of the recommendation as amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.
No.
The motion passes. Now, on to article three, which is in page 18. Recommended that the town vote to amend the general bylaws by adding the following, chapter 26. No person or entity excluding the residents of residential premises on projects not requiring a building permit on their lot and excluding the town shall operate any mechanized vehicles, including without limitation trucks, backhoes, bobcats, and earth movers, or operate other mechanized equipment, including without limitation power saws, other power tools, power washers, chainsaws, generators, lawn mowers, lawn sweepers, and leaf blowers with respect to construction or maintenance activities on any lot in the town, except as may be permitted by a construction management plan approved by the planning board, or building commissioner, or in the absence of an approved construction management plan, except between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. on Saturdays, and 10:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. on Sundays, and on legal holidays when the New York Stock Exchange is closed, provided that the building commissioner, police chief, fire chief, director of public works, or their designees may permit such construction or maintenance activity outside of such hours in the event of emergency or other good cause, and further provided that construction activities on the interior of a fully enclosed building may be conducted outside of these hours, and further provided that snow plowing and snow and ice removal may be conducted outside of these hours. The building commissioner is authorized to enforce the provisions of this section. Any person or entity who violates any provision of this section shall be subject to a stop work order. A violation shall receive a warning for the first offense and shall be liable for a fine of $100 for each subsequent offense. Mr. Burns, I think you wanted to speak to this article.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. David Burns, precinct two, town meeting member, chair of the board of selectmen. You know, so this article, it stemmed from the number of complaints that we'd received town-wide, whereas, you know, whether it be construction companies or contractors, we're doing work at odd times, which were inconveniencing you as a taxpayer in your neighborhoods. Basically, this doesn't limit the homeowner at all in doing any yard work at any point in time. It's a good neighbor policy, and I think that, you know, this is something that is much needed, it's something that we support. I think that, you know, by limiting these contractors to doing work under certain times will increase the quality of life for all of you as residents. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak to this article? This requires a simple majority. Ms. Agostino, do you wish to speak? Yes, you do. I think it's dead.
Diane DeTulio Agostino, precinct nine, and chair of the commission on disability. Just prior to making the comments regarding this article, I'd like to make a note that the commission is in desperate need of some additional assistance, and that you don't even need to attend our meetings. The last meeting, several of the members couldn't physically get there, but their input was received by a conference call at the table. So please keep that in mind if you know anyone willing to help, just to give any commissioner a call, and we'll let you know what we do to help everyone else. So thrilled that the board of selectmen followed through with this. The commission has heard from so many people about noise in this town. We've learned even about new disabilities that some of our residents have, and we're trying very hard to reach out to people who might feel isolated by their disability. And in one case, we heard about an individual who is so disabled by noise that is rarely able to leave the home. So I thank the board of commission, I mean, the board of selectmen, and know that this article will certainly improve the quality of life of everyone, but especially those with hearing loss or sensitivity to sound. So thank you very much.
Yes, Ms. Sheridan?
Thank you, Lyndalee Sheridan, town meeting member, precinct nine. I want to thank you also for this article, but I do have a question around the Saturday morning time. So I appreciate the seven to seven, Monday through Friday, but wonder what the thinking was behind the 7:00 a.m. start time on Saturday mornings. So if someone could just speak to the reasoning behind that. Personally, I'm not going to make an amendment, but it just seems like an eight o'clock start time would be more reasonable on a Saturday. Thank you.
Mr. Whiteside?
Alexander Whiteside, chairman of the planning board, town meeting member, precinct nine. The thinking was that Saturday is a business day, and a lot of people currently start work at 7:00 a.m., and pushing it up to eight is probably, probably not entirely reasonable. So that's, that was our thinking.
Anyone else wish to speak to this article?
Karen Friedman Hanna, precinct two. I have a question about the idea of it being the days that are the legal holidays when the New York Stock Exchange is closed. I know, first off, this is a little self-serving question, my husband is now a small-scale contractor, and frequently, I know already, people who work, who don't want to take a day off to have to be there when their home is being worked on, you know, if they need something done, frequently, they request of him to come on a holiday because they're off from work, and they want to know that work can get done. So the idea that this is automatically excluding those days, I think, is a very significant potential problem for contractors and for homeowners who want to have work done when they don't have to be at work. So I would request that we consider modifying that portion to taking out the legal holidays, because very often, those are on Mondays. That's, that's a workday for contractors, you know, for, for various things. You know, I don't know, I think that that one is stretching it a bit, but, you know, I would ask the board to consider that, modifying this to not include the legal holidays. I can see early morning being a problem for people, and late at night being a problem for people, but on regular workday holidays, if they fall within the work week, I think that that's asking a lot.
So it doesn't sound like you want to make a specific motion. You're trying to ask the planning board a question to see if, how they could accommodate your...
Well, that would be my first step, to see if it can be accommodated, and if it can't, then I would like to make an amendment to take that portion out. So I guess that's a question of whether it, you know, how this can be approached.
Well, we start with a question before we get to a motion. How about that?
Okay.
Mr. Whiteside?
We did recognize that there are many holidays where people work, but legal holidays when the stock exchange is closed, there are not that many of them, Christmas, New Year's Day. They're pretty big holidays that are involved here. Most of the holidays, the stock exchange grinds along. That was our thinking. People who are at home deserve some protection against noise on those days.
Do we know specifically, besides Christmas and New Year's and... Do we know specifically, besides Christmas and New Year's and Thanksgiving, what the legal holidays are? I'm just, I'm curious. I don't know offhand for...
Why don't we, okay, why don't we try to get that follow-up question answered?
Because if it's only those few, I'm fine with this, but I thought that the stock exchange was closed on some additional days.
I think we're looking up that answer. Does someone have that answer? Yes.
Ellen Dennoyer, Precinct Two.
Speak up, please, ma'am. Thank you.
Yeah, sorry. Ellen Dennoyer, Precinct Two. At least in 2017, the stock market was also closed on Good Friday, to your point. I believe it also often closes in the afternoon, the day before the Fourth of July. So I think I'm in favor of the article in general, but I don't think the list of the stock market closures is the right list of holidays to use.
Sorry, Mr. Whiteside, we can't hear you. So, ma'am, Ms. Dennoyer, are you finished with your comments before Mr. Whiteside stands up?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're going to list the, do you have an answer here, Mr. Whiteside?
Good Friday may be a, it may be closed, but it's not a holiday, so it wouldn't apply to Good Friday. We've got New Year's Day, Martin Luther King Day, Washington's Birthday, Memorial Day, Independence Day, Labor Day, Thanksgiving Day, and Christmas.
Did that answer our question on the legal holidays?
I suppose the day before Independence Day also is not a legal holiday, although Independence Day is.
So Ms. Hannah, this is now your...
I'm satisfied with the way that it is. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Mahalchuk, I think you're next.
Mike Mahalchuk, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Seven. I try to keep things quiet. I'm a huge fan of peace and quiet. And there's a precedent in East Milton, I believe, that the Fruit Center doesn't take deliveries in trucks before 8:00 in the morning on Saturday. So I was wondering if the Planning Board would consider a friendly amendment to change that from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00, as suggested earlier by Lyndalee Sheridan. I think it's pretty reasonable, and is precedent.
All right, we have a request for a friendly amendment that does not require a second, spoken directly to the Planning Board. We'll see what they say.
That would be fine, 8:00 on Saturdays.
And just briefly, I'll check in with the Warrant Committee. Mr. Burns, like to fill the gap?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is actually our article, and, you know, so, that's why I think it's incumbent that I speak about it.
I apologize.
And I appreciate the concern, the 8:00. I mean, look at, we hear it as much, if not more than anyone else, about the concern with the noise. But we also have to recognize that we have businesses like landscapers, several in town, that depend upon that on Saturdays. It's part of their work week, and, you know, and often, they're doing a lot of catch-up due to weather. And I think to take that timeframe away from them, we have to think of these businesses. We don't have many businesses in town, and I think we need to support them. So, you know, I think that we're making strides here, you know, by limiting contractors during certain times and having a good neighbor policy, by being able to still do work on your own houses, but it's our opinion that we should still keep it at 7:00 to support the local businesses.
So the Board of Selectmen... Mr. Burns? I stand corrected, by the way, you are, you were the submitting authority. You reject the friendly amendment?
That's correct, Mr. Moderator.
You do? Okay. So now, Mr. Mahalchuk, there's a motion before the body. Is there a second?
Second.
Would anyone like to speak to the motion to amend? Let's get the language right. So we're on page 18 of your warrant, and I know we can't edit this live, but I'm going down to the bottom third where you see on the right-hand side of the paragraph, it says 7:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. on Saturdays. If I understand, Mr. Mahalchuk, you want that to be 8:00 a.m. instead of 7:00 a.m. Is that correct?
Correct.
Correct. Does everyone understand that? Anyone wish to speak to the motion to amend? All those in favor of the motion to amend, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
The motion fails. So we're now back to the article as unamended, as written. Anyone wish to speak to this Article Three? It requires a simple majority. All those in favor of the recommendation of the Warrant Committee, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
The motion carries. We're now on to Article Four. Since time is moving on, this is somewhat technical and lengthy, I'll entertain a motion to waive the reading of this article.
No.
Seconded?
No.
All in favor of waiving the reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
Motion carries. We will waive the reading. I'd like to recognize Steve O'Donnell, who is the Chairman of the Historical Commission.
Steve O'Donnell, Chair of the Historical Commission. Chapter 22 of the general bylaws was passed by Town Meeting 10 years ago. It is officially entitled "Demolition of Historically Significant Buildings," that is commonly known as the Demo Delay Bylaw. Our effort here with this article is to update that bylaw and to create a situation where we don't have to come back to Town Meeting frequently to update it. So this article involves three specific points. However, in talking to people, as members of the commission talk to people, there doesn't seem to be a clear understanding of what the bylaw does now. So I'd like to take a couple of minutes and just explain what it does, and then how what we're proposing would change it. The bylaw doesn't prevent anybody from doing anything or force somebody to do something that they don't want to do. What the bylaw does, excuse me, it instructs the building commissioner to forward to the Historical Commission a demolition application on a covered building. Covered buildings currently are those built 1919 or before. When the demolition application is forwarded to the commission, they review it, make a determination of whether or not the building is historically significant or not. If it's found to be not historically significant, the demolition could go on the next day, soon as they get their permit. If the building is found to be historically significant and the applicant wishes to pursue demolition, they file the demolition plan with the committee, with the commission. The commission then schedules a public hearing, giving the public, neighbors, anybody else in town, an opportunity to weigh in on whether or not they think the property ought to be preserved or not. If the commission finds the property not preferably preserved, the demolition can go forward. If the commission finds it to be preferably preserved, there would be a nine-month period of demolition delay inserted, period during which the building commissioner can issue a demolition permit, but a period of time that allows interested parties to come together and figure out an alternative to demolition, be it preservation, restoration, reworking of a development plan to include the historic building, or perhaps even have the building relocated. This takes a lot of energy and time, and the current nine-month demolition delay period simply isn't long enough. Now, we've asked for three specific changes. The first change would be to update what I call the trigger year, the year before which demolition applications have to be submitted to the commission, and we're proposing a new date of 75 years before the application. So rather than a specific year, it would be a moving year going forward, automatically covering more buildings as time went on. Newton, by the way, has a 50-year threshold. Brookline has no threshold at all. Every building in town can be subject to their delay by law. We're proposing 75 years. Second item is really a housekeeping item, where we're asking for eight copies of the demolition plan rather than four, simply because there are seven members of the commission and the planning office needs one. That's really just housekeeping. The third item is the demolition delay period. We're proposing a delay period of 24 months. As I outlined before, the whole purpose of the demolition delay period is to give parties time to come together and find an alternative to demolition. We looked at a lot of other cities and towns who are experiencing the same kinds of problems that we have in Milton, same kinds of problems in terms of demolition and redevelopment. Whether it's reworking a development plan, or finding a new buyer and financing to restore the property, or finding a buyer who can relocate the property, relocate the building to a different property, all of this takes time to put together. The flip side of the demolition delay period is that sometimes, an owner will say, "That's fine, I'm just going to sit and wait it out." Makes no effort whatsoever. We can do nothing. Other towns, which have Community Preservation Act funds, can be a partner in trying to preserve property. Of course, we don't have that option in Milton. Preservation of private property is strictly a private enterprise. What the commission is really trying to do is to encourage, we can't require, we can't prevent demolition, we're trying to encourage preservation. A longer demolition delay period not only gives more of an opportunity to raise funds and find buyers in other locations and so forth, but it also discourages just sitting by and waiting for it to happen.
Mr. O'Donnell, four minutes left.
When historic buildings are gone, they're gone. They can't be replaced. Every loss of a historic building impacts the town. Every loss of a historic building decreases some of that which makes the town a desirable place in which to live. We earnestly request your support for this article. Thank you.
Mr. Funling, did you want to speak to this article?
Hello, I'm Jay Funling, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Three. So I read this article, and the first thing that leapt out to me was the cutoff change for the buildings. I immediately saw, as Mr. O'Donnell just pointed out, and also, I'd like to thank Mr. O'Donnell, he very patiently answered way too many of my questions in this past week, so thank you very much. When I read it, it leapt out to me that the cutoff for buildings is being moved from 1920 to 75 years in the past. So when I read that, my first question was, what's 2018 minus 75? Okay, I see a lot of hands out there. Okay, it's 1943 is the answer. So we're moving the cutoff year from 1920 to 1943, which will then move forward one year at a time. My next question was, how many houses are currently covered under this bylaw, and how many houses will be covered if we approve this? And fortunately, the Town Assessor makes information like that publicly available, so I looked at all the construction dates for single-family houses in Milton, and I made this graph. There we go. What I learned was that 12% of houses in town were built before 1900, and then we have the houses in red on the graph that were built between 1900 and 1920, so a total of 19% of single-family houses are currently covered by this bylaw. Now, after 1920, there was a real construction boom in the 20s and 30s, as you can see. By the time we get to the construction drop-off during World War II, we have 58% of current Milton houses were built before 1944. So if we approve this, we'll go from covering 19% of houses to 58% of houses. And then, of course, as you can see, after World War II, we have the construction boom in the 1950s, and if we approve this bylaw, it will go forward one year at a time, and in the next 15 or so years, we'll cover that 1950s construction boom. I'm not saying if this is a good thing or a bad thing, but I got this information and wanted to share it with Town Meeting to make sure we all know what we're voting on. Last slide, I won't speak to very often because Mr. O'Donnell did a good job of summarizing the process, but still, in the vein of, let's make sure we know what we're voting on, the process for determining if it's historically significant can take up to 52 days, according to the bylaw. Process for determining if it's preferably preserved, the owner has two months to prepare their case, and the Board has two months to do their work, so that's four months if everybody takes their full time. So again, just in the interest of knowing what we're voting on, it could be almost a two-and-a-half-year process. I haven't decided how I'm voting on this article, but I wanted to make sure we all knew what we were voting on.
Mr. Morash?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Steve Morash, Precinct Two, Town Meeting Member. I might be mistaken, but this is an old city, an old town, rather. I think it came around, around the 1600s, not long after Boston. Do we really not know what historic buildings are in town? Well, we should, because we're not building any more historic buildings, I don't believe, and if we do, they should be covered by the first, number one, a building listed on the National Register of Historic Places or the State Register, or which has been found eligible for listing in the National Register. Period. It then says "or." This means that my house, built in 1930, now falls in this category. And if for some reason I wanted to do something to my house to take part of it down, I now have to wait two years, probably, for this town to overreach this, to get into my house, my personal property. And I guarantee you, I know the people I bought the house from, and while I may think some very nice things happened in that, I guarantee you, nothing historical has happened in this house. And I would think a lot of those other things are there, too. So I'd like, yeah. I would like to make a motion, Mr. Moderator, to strike small number number two, and not go back to 75 years. I think the great job that the Milton Historical Society does in this town should be enough to identify and help us all get our support to save those historical buildings in town. I grew up in Boston. I know a lot of historical buildings. We can say there are new architectures that are coming along, new architectural gems, and when they come online, we should make that a historical building and save it. I've listened to this for years in this town, about the travesty to this town that was done, the horror that was done by tearing down Old City Hall, Old Town Hall. We all agree on that. But where would we be with the new schools that we now sit in if we had not stopped those historic 1975 buildings? Excuse me, 75-year-old buildings. So I asked for that amendment, I made that amendment, to strike small number two in Section A. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Is there a second?
Second.
So everyone understands, we're on page 20 in the dark black text. So where it says, "Section A," below that subsection two, the motion is to strike that sentence, this reads, "Any building which in whole or in part was built more than, including 75 years prior." Anyone wish to speak to this motion to amend? I'm sorry, yes, Mr. O'Donnell.
Couple of points of clarification.
Couple of points of clarification, if I may. Town buildings are specifically excluded from this bylaw. Partial demolition is specifically excluded from this bylaw. As I said in the beginning, this bylaw doesn't force anybody to do anything or prevent them from doing anything. What 75 years does is gives the Historical Commission an opportunity to review a demolition application. Now, there was a firm amount of feeling in town when the Milton Women's Club building was demolished on Reed Steel Road. No one had any say in that whatsoever, because that was built after 1919. Now, I don't know whether other buildings have come down that would fall within that 75-year period, because the commission isn't notified. An application is filed, it's gone. I would strongly urge, again, partial demolitions are not included, town buildings are not included. I would urge you to reject the amendment. Thank you.
Yes, sir, in front?
Hi, Terry McNeil, Precinct 3. Moving to Precinct 2 soon, so I'll probably be booted off for a while here until I run again. I just want to talk about the opportunity to review that Mr. O'Donnell just touched upon, because the opportunity to review, which we're now subjecting not 20% of the homes in town, but 60%, close to 60% of those homes, too, is the opportunity for the board, who does a fine job, to determine whether a building is historically significant. What does that mean? So the definition of historically significant building is any building which is A, importantly associated with one or more historic persons or events, or with the architectural, cultural, political, economic, or social history of the town of Milton, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, or the United States of America; or B, is historically or architecturally important by reason of period, style, method of building, construction, or association with a particular architect or builder, either by itself or in the context of a group of buildings. Now, God bless the Historical Commission for dealing with this definition, but it means all of the homes we've talked about are now subject to a very subjective standard. We have now tripled the number of homes in Milton that are subject to it. And I fully support and love the character of this town, because there's historic homes and buildings here that give it the character that we have. But I don't think, without a showing of why this 23, 24 enrolling period is historically significant, we should subject the homes in this town in that period to this two-year waiting period, which I fully support for historic buildings, but I don't support for any building that the commission happens to believe may be historic based on a definition which is hard to refute. And I think before we make it more difficult to do construction in this town, I don't think it's going to create affordability, particularly if the towns cited for this are Brookline and Newton. They're not known for being the most affordable towns. So I think we need to think about ways to tackle this issue, and one of them already exists, and it's the zoning that goes in place when you demolish a building. It doesn't mean because you demolish the building, you get to put up something brand-new and hideous and ugly. And by the way, that process to rebuild something will inevitably, if it doesn't conform to zoning, require a public hearing, and neighbors can weigh in. So I think, while I fully support the idea of giving them the two-year period they need for buildings that are actually historic, I think subjecting three times the numbers of homes in a town that's already expensive and already difficult to rehab and develop for people who are flocking here to move here is really not the best move for us. And so I support this amendment because it tackles that one specific issue, which is putting three times as many homes in this bucket while protecting everything else the board is doing and needs the right to do. So I support the amendment by Mr. Morash. Thank you.
Good evening. Joan Gankarski, Precinct 1. My home was built before the Civil War in the 1850s, although I have not lived in the home that long. Since my home has been in this category prior to tonight's amendment, and I'm a numbers person, I would like to ask Mr. O'Donnell, as well as the Historical Commission, if you can give me a certain timeframe, let's say the last 10 years, in how many homes have actually been discussed and a question with regard to their demolition has been presented? Give us a real-world example of what we are speaking of. I would truly appreciate that.
In the last seven years, fiscal 2011 through 2017, the Historical Commission received referrals of 21 demolition applications. Of those 11, I'm sorry, of those 21, 11 were found not historically significant. Of the remaining 10, four were found not preferably preserved. Four were found, after public hearing, preferably preserved. Two owners took no further action. So over the last seven years, we had 21 referrals. There were four buildings preferably preserved. Two have come down, one awaits the wrecking ball, the fourth still stands for now.
Thank you. Mr. Chinman, I think you were next.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Michael Chibbin, Precinct 2. Mr. Moderator, could I ask if anyone has a laser pointer that would make my point much clearer? If not, I'll try without it. Mr. Moderator, I believe that what we're actually voting on, and what Mr. Morash addressed, is this amendment proposed here in Section 3.8, little 2, whatever, by deleting the words "prior to" and "including 1919," inserting their place "more than including 75 years prior," which Mr. Morash wants to eliminate that from the article. This, I suggest, is clarification about what would happen if that change was made. And I don't know who made this document, but they did it carefully, because they correctly said that, as amended, Section 3A would read, "Provisions of Chapter 22 shall not apply to any building which is owned by the town, a building listed on the National Register, or any building which in whole or in part was built more than and including 75 years prior." So if we do this amendment, it nonsensically makes Chapter 22 applicable to newer buildings, not older buildings. And I said the person who prepared this document did it carefully, because I checked the bylaw, and they're correct. What the warrant has in it, different language than this. If you look at the language in the warrant that says, "As amended, Section 3A would read," I'm sorry. Yeah, "As amended, Section 3A would read," incorrectly states what the amendment would do and adds a sentence, which is necessary to make the whole thing make sense. They've added a sentence, "The provision of Chapter 22 shall apply only to the following buildings." That sentence is in between this provisions of Chapter 22 shall not apply to the town, and then it says it shall apply only to the following buildings. So these two provisions become what the Chapter 22 applies to, not what it doesn't apply to, which is how it reads right now. So I'm in favor of Mr. Morash's amendment, but I think he needs to add that the sentence that's, I suggest improperly included in the warrant, needs to be added to the bylaw to make it make any sense, or else we're amending the bylaw to apply to new buildings, not old buildings.
So I want to make sure, yeah, if you could just, you're just saying that...
No, this is correct. If you look at the current bylaws, the sentence that is included in the warrant, "The provisions of Chapter 22 shall apply only to the following buildings," that's not in the bylaw. It should be.
So your point is this is new language that's being inserted in the bylaw, and by removing one of those sections...
My point is that the summary in the Article IV that says, "As amended, Section 3.8 would read," includes a sentence which is necessary for the whole thing to make sense, but that sentence isn't in the bylaw, as this summary properly states. Unless, there's a later article that addresses the lack of bylaws being updated, but I'm going on the bylaws that are available online. We need a sentence that's in the Article IV, and it's in the warrant committee's recommendation, that would be, "The provisions of Chapter 22 shall apply only to the following buildings," which needs to come before Roman numeral 1 and 2, or else we're making this thing apply to new buildings, not old buildings.
I see. Okay. Then why don't we take that as a question, is what's the impact of adopting this amendment on the...
Well, I guess I want to amend the amendment, Mr. Moderator.
Well, there's one way to do that. First, we'd have to propose that to Mr. Morash as a friendly to his. But why don't we take a minute and just get some clarification on this before we start which means it's Mr. Morash's purview to accept or reject it as a friendly. So, Mr. Morash, if you understand the change as proposed, would you...
I do, Mr. Moderator, and I accept it as a friendly amendment to my amendment. So that should read, "Section 2 would now revert back to any building which in whole or part was built more than and prior to and including 1919."
So is that clear to the audience? We're on page 20, we're in that small paragraph, III, that's in parentheses. Mr. Morash is saying, retain that paragraph now, but modify the language per his comments. Is that clear? And you've now accepted that as a friendly amendment?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Thank you very much.
By the way, since it's Mr. Morash's amendment to amend, it does not require the support, yet, of Selectment Historical and Warrant Committee, et cetera.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
So now we have...
Thank you, Mr. Chinman.
So I think we have, we have a second to Mr. Morash's... Now, we now have a motion to amend. Is it clear to the body what we're discussing? Okay. Anyone wish to speak to the motion to amend to Mr. Morash's language? That was not you, no. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Joe Sloan, Precinct 10. I will just ask for additional clarification. My question was going to be, if that, the section III, referring to 75 years prior, is in fact omitted, amended to be omitted, would we in fact revert to that 1919 language? Because if not, then the only buildings that would apply, the way this is written, are buildings that are currently on the Historic Register or eligible to be on the register. So I think we need a very clear definition of that.
So, Mr. Marsh, if you could do me a favor, could you put down on a piece of paper exactly the language you are amending for us? Because we do need to get that correct for the record. I don't see where Mr. Morash went. There he is, he's writing, okay. Meanwhile, does anyone else wish to speak to the motion to amend while he's writing that down? Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Cheryl Tagheas, Precinct 9, member of the Planning Board and Chair of the Master Plan Implementation Committee. I worked on the master plan for probably five years and on the planning board for three. three, or in my third year. And the most consistent thing that I've heard is how people love the character of Milton and they want to protect the character of Milton. And what do we think provides the character of Milton is our historic architecture, our historic structures. This is the only tool the town has to consider preservation? It doesn't prevent demolition, it just buys time to consider whether preservation is a viable option. So, I think it's important to think about that relative to the character of the town. The year 1919, what makes that better than 1920? What makes it better than 1925? So, there's, the date can seem somewhat arbitrary, but as time moves forward, that date becomes important, too. My home was built in the 1950s. It's what's considered mid-century modern. There are people now who are looking to preserve mid-century modern homes. If we hadn't bought it, there was an offer on our house to tear it down and build a center enter colonial. That might have been okay, but we wouldn't have the mid-century modern. So, please, let's give ourselves this tool. Thank you.
Mr. Morash, can you read your precise amendment, please?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Steve Morash, Precinct 2. Section 2, subsection 2, will read, "Any building which in whole or in part was built prior to and including 1919."
That's very clear.
May I speak to that one more time, Mr. Moderator? Very briefly?
Is anyone else, no one else is waiting? So, yes, you may. You want to speak to that motion to amend? Okay, then, yes, you're up.
I would also point out, as my friend, Mrs. Tagheas said, look at what's in Section 1, or it does not preclude anybody in this town board to say that a building is either listed on the National Register of Historic Places or the State Register, or which has been found eligible for listing on the National Register. I would point out, I believe, having a daughter who's a historical architecture historian, there are a number of houses, mid-century, even built after 1919, that fit that requirement. God love Frank Lloyd Wright. So, I think it's covered by that, and I urge the town meeting to pass and vote yes on this amendment. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Anyone else wish to speak to the motion to amend? I'll just read it again. So, we're on page 20, "ii," "Any building which in whole or in part was built prior to and including 1919," is the new amended proposed language. Do we have a comment from the Historical Commission and the Selectment and then the Warrant Committee on this?
We, again, would oppose the amendment. It's very nice to have buildings on the National and State Register. There are too many buildings in town to even think about that. Please defeat the amendment.
Mr. Burns?
David Burns, Precinct 2, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen voted unanimously to reject the amendment, believe in the preservation of the town, and believe that only a small number of properties are actually affected per Steve's presentation. We feel that this will continue under their auspices, and we urge you to support this article. Thank you.
Warrant Committee, do you have an opinion?
George Asher, Chair of the Warrant Committee. The Warrant Committee unanimously rejects the amendment and votes against its recommendation.
Okay, seeing no one else, I'm sorry, we're still on the motion to amend, right? Haven't forgotten you. All those in favor of the motion to amend, please signify by saying aye.
Aye!
All opposed, say no.
No!
The motion to amend fails. We're now back to the motion as written in your warrant on page 20. And, sir, I think you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sean Fahey, Precinct 9. One consideration that hasn't been mentioned yet, but I think is worthwhile for the group to consider, the number of homes that were presented up here, and I think the percentage was 58% of the homes would fall into this 75-year benchmark. I think that for any person that had a home that fell within that category and you were a potential seller of your home and your potential buyer of your home had to consider that your home had some type of historical restriction on it, I think it could affect the value of the property and your ability to sell. You know, any type of alteration, construction, renovation work today is fairly challenging and restrictive as it is, and to have the added burden of a historical condition placed upon it, I think you could find yourself in a situation where the ability to sell your home could be adversely affected. My home was built in 1970, so I guess I'm not going to have to worry till I'm about 82 or 83, but that's not the case for an awful lot of people in town. So, it's a consideration I think this body should consider. I would be in favor of Mr. Morash's position to remove that particular part of this article.
Just to be clear, Mr. Fahey, that ship sailed, so you're... I'm sorry, I thought you were waiting to speak to the primary motion.
No, Mr. Moderator, I thought, I was not trying to speak to the amendment or the friendly, I was trying to speak to Mr. Morash's original position. That's what I was trying to speak to.
Okay. Mr. Sloan, you've been sitting there, were you, are you done? Okay. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Doug Hine, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 2. I just want to bring something up. We're all kind of using the phrase "building" and "home" as if they are the same thing. They are not. When we say "building," that could be the detached garage that you have that was built in 1955 and in a few short years will be historic. So, recall that. If you want to someday replace your garage, it will fall under the purview of this article. Now, I think the other larger and perhaps more problematic issue is what about commercial buildings? Again, because these are not just homes, they're buildings. Let's say, for instance, there was a comprehensive mixed-use property that was envisioned for a street in Milton, perhaps Blue Hills, and it received overwhelming support from the town and the voters at large that has a building on it. The Historic Commission, if I understand it, could utilize the power of this article to say, well, we got to study that issue. So, the folks that want to build a Trader Joe's or somewhere else or something like that, you're going to have to wait two years to possibly get a demolition permit. So, realize the power of this. Now, I don't know when, and I'll just say it, the Ice House building was built. If that's before 1919, it could be subject to this. So, I wish I'd thought of this before we defeated Mr. Morash's motion, in which case I would have yelled a little louder, but just consider that.
Thank you. Mr. Frazetti?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Steve Frazetti, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 7, and member of the Board of Cemetery Trustees. And I was just wondering if someone could answer the question for all the reasons given tonight, why it's important to preserve historical buildings, why the town and municipal buildings are exempt from this, because I would think that they would also have some historic value.
Mr. O'Donnell, can you answer that question for the meeting?
The only answer I can give to that specific question is that's the way the bylaw was written 10 years ago. I wasn't on the commission 10 years ago. One of the former speakers, I will just follow up, this indeed includes all buildings, not just homes, commercial buildings, barns, something which frequently come before us. And the loss of every barn depletes Milton's rural heritage.
I'm trying to see, are there some folks over here who do want to speak?
Genevieve Martland, Precinct 4. I just wanted to, I think 60% of us, like, started to panic when we saw the numbers up on the board. My house was built in 1920, I like it. I don't think you would consider it historically relevant, and I think that that was a gist that I got from the presentation earlier, that a lot of our homes were built well before the threshold that's been mentioned, and they're beautiful, and I love my home. But again, I don't think it would be considered historically relevant to the town, and I think that that's what we're thinking about here. There are beautiful buildings in this town, and we need to think about preserving them and making sure, especially as time moves forward, that the houses continue to be considered and looked at well after that 1920's threshold. Time is moving forward. Our homes are getting older, and there's some beauty in them. So, I hope that you support this article. Thank you.
Mr. Tagheas?
Cheryl Tagheas, again, Precinct 9. I just want to make a comment that I forgot to make earlier in response to another speaker who said that we have zoning codes that don't allow us to build ugly buildings. I would just like to comment that the zoning code does not dictate design, it only dictates dimensional criteria and use. So, for a single-family home that doesn't come before the Planning Board for a special permit, you have setbacks away from the property lines and you have height limits, it doesn't tell you anything else about what you can design. So, the likelihood that you're going to get something of a high-quality historic home that's been built today, there's no guarantee of it, folks.
Ms. Friedman-Hanna?
Karen Friedman-Hanna, Precinct 2. Since it was mentioned, I am curious about the specifics of the Ice House project, how this will impact that if this were to be voted on, if you could answer that, because several of us are talking about that, wanting to know if this will alter that going forward in any way if this is passed.
Mr. O'Donnell?
I have no idea. Nothing to do with the proposed Ice House project has come before the commission. I don't know. I would assume that certainly with the 75 years, that the buildings on the project site would come under review. Whether or not they would be found historically significant, or if they were found to be historically significant, if they were found to be preferably preserved, is yet to be determined.
Just a second, Mr. Cork. I'm trying to go to our town bodies first. The Planning Board have an answer on this one, or any idea, since you brought this motion in May? No, okay. Then, Mr. Corkman, you've got an answer for us?
Several of the buildings, Ned Corkman, Precinct 3, and I was the attorney who brought the Ice House project before this body. Several of the buildings predate 1919, they go back to 1870s. They are subject to the demolition, they're subject to the process. My expectation, my trust, hope would be that, given this body's overwhelming support for the enactment of that bylaw, that the Historical Commission would be cooperative in its review and would not determine the buildings to be subject to demolition delay. We're still awaiting word from the Attorney General's Office that the bylaw has been approved, but once that happens, the process will begin at some point beyond that. Thank you.
Thank you for the answer. Does anyone else wish to speak to this recommendation? Seeing none, we're back to the original article as written. All those in favor of the recommendation of the Warrant Committee, please signify by saying aye.
Aye!
Opposed, no?
No!
The motion fails. We are now on Article... Ah, people are standing? One, two, three. We have seven. Okay? So, folks, if seven town meeting members stand in order to request a recount, then we're going to do a recount. Let me just confer with the town clerk on some assistance, and we'll begin that process. In Section 1 over here, could I have Peter Mullen and Ruth Baltopolis? In Section 2, Kathleen O'Donnell and Leroy Walker? In Section 3, I'm sorry, I don't know the last names, Clunin and, first name's Clunin and Murphy? And Mary Reif, could you help with Mr. Mullen over here? So, do we have our six proctors? Nope? Are you missing, is Leroy Walker still here? Yes, there's Leroy. And over in Section 3, Murphy and Clunin, are you here? Nope, we need two other volunteers. Can I recruit the Erwin? No, I'll keep Gene Erwin and... Ma'am, can you help us count? Sure. All right, folks, we're going to have a standing count. I want to make sure all the town meeting members have come down into this section below the rail up there. So, what we're going to do is, if you are in favor of the article, you'll stand in your section, the proctors will count, and they'll, then we'll have you sit down, and if you're opposed, the proctors will count, and we will tally all that up, and we'll find out if the majority, what the majority says. So, all those in favor of the recommendation of the Warrant Committee, please stand. Okay, do we have proctors? Do we have everybody counted? Do we have everybody counted in your section?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Proctors, do we have our counts? Okay, everyone can have a seat. So Section 1, could you call out your ayes and nays, please?
Section 1, yes. Thirty-one, no. Twenty-three.
Thank you. Section 2?
Yes.
Fifty-four and thirty. Okay. And Section 3? That was fifteen and twenty-three. Okay, the count came to 100 ayes, 76 nays. So the motion carries. You up for a few more? We are on to Article 5. I will read this briefly and make a quick explanation. To see if the town will vote pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 71, Section 16D, Other Enabling Law and the Blue Hills Regional Technical School District Agreement to express its disapproval of the debt authorized by the Blue Hills Regional School District School Committee for a project renovating the 50-year-old Blue Hills Regional Technical School District school building and to act on anything relating thereto. It was submitted by the Board of Selectmen, recommended that the town vote no. So this may be confusing, and by the way, we have a couple of speakers here, but this is statutory language that you see in the article. So since the article reads disapproval and the warrant committee is recommending a no vote on the disapproval, if you are in favor of the warrant committee recommendation, you will end up approving the money. Everybody got that? So if you vote aye, we approve the money.
No.
Mr. Town Council, is that correct? We're voting on the recommendation. The recommendation is to vote no. So I'm sorry, I spoke wrong. No means you approve the debt. I stand corrected. Yes means you decline the debt. So I said it wrong. Sorry, didn't read my own notes. So if you vote no, we'll spend the money. If you vote yes, we will decline to spend the money. Okay. With that, we have a short presentation by, normally it would be Festus Joyce, who's our representative of Blue Hills Regional Technical School, but he is ill tonight, so we have presentations by Stephen Moore and James Qualia, who are officials with the Blue Hills School. They're going to speak to us about this item.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to be back in front of you again. I'm James Qualia, the superintendent-director of your regional technical school, Blue Hills. With me is Assistant Superintendent Stephen Moore, who's our Assistant Super for Business and Personnel, as well as Carl Franceschi. So if anyone recognizes Carl, that's because he was the designer for this high school project years ago. First, I will address the school's renovation project from a needs and benefits perspective. And Mr. Moore will address the financial needs and Carl will be here for any technical questions if there are. So we submitted six statements of interest with the MSBA before we were picked up, knowing that the school was just getting older and systems were failing. Stated simply, our facility is structurally sound, but most of the systems are tired and at the end of their useful life. Also, no major addition or renovation has been undertaken since the expansion of the school in 1974. The rest of the facility is 50 years old or more. Failures of major systems such as HVAC, and I will give you one example of that, in the last three years, two of those winters have seen a major failure of HVAC. Also, failures of the PA system and electrical systems have become more common in the last few years. These are just a few needs of the school facility at present. Blue Hills will not ask for what we do not need. In fact, when this project was initiated commensurate with interest in us from the MSBA, we had two things, we held two things to be paramount. One, fiscal discipline in order to be responsible to our member towns. And the second, nothing would be in the project that didn't need to be in it. There are a lot of educational items that would be nice to have, but they will have to wait while we address more pressing infrastructure needs through this project. So rather than a new facility with its staggering costs, which are well in excess of an average of over $500 a square foot, we are operating at under, slightly under 300 per square foot for a renovation. So we choose to do the following. So some of the, some of the actual components of this project are, yes, when you do reach a certain threshold with your project, it does trigger ADA compliance. However, we choose to want to move in this direction to make the school more accessible for everyone. Next, please. This is a, there are some rather large chunks to this project. One of them is everything to do with improved life safety and fire suppression. The building, when it was built, because it's of a certain age, it didn't require any fire suppression. Now it does. This is probably the largest chunk of the, of the project itself, is the HVAC system. That's where most of the failures have, have taken place, is in the heating loop throughout the building. There's also new, new code requires a certain amount of makeup air, so there's going to be an awful lot of rooftop units along with the univentilators and a new heating system. But keep in mind that we did keep our boilers that were installed 12 years ago because we are trying to be cost efficient. Electrical systems, we did have, we, there are two feeds that come into the building, one for the new building and one for the older building. And by new, I mean 1974, so it's relative. The, and there was a major failure of one of the underground cables. So a lot of the electrical infrastructure needs to be replaced. This is probably the more visual part of the project, which is new facade, new entries. Up around the soffit, all of the windows and window walls will be, will be replaced around the building to make them more efficient and more energy efficient in particular. One thing we did in order to, to be prudent with the, with the cost is, we're only replacing two-thirds of the roof and one-third, we're going to be able to be, to have it re-warranted. And this is, there are some educational benefits. I don't, I don't want to make it seem like the project is all about, all about infrastructure. But the infrastructure side is also affected by IT and telecommunications. There needs to be a replacement of the entire network, including all of the servers, the fiber backbone, which will, and all of the newer intelligent switches. Although we are not, in this project, there, we're already a one-to-one school with Chromebooks and most schools are, do have some type of devices for most of their students now. So we won't, there's none of that in the project. There's none of this, there's very little money for such teacher stations and such. It's mostly infrastructure. And finally, the HVAC has a lot to do with improving the climate. I can tell you that the school is, is very much like, my office in particular goes from thinking you're in a sauna to freezing, depending on whether the sun is beaming through the windows or not. It's very, very poorly regulated. There are students that walk around with a parka either on or under their arm during the day because there's just such wide swings in, in temperature throughout the building. And finally, there is a certain amount of renovation in the locker rooms, lockers and athletic areas. Quite a bit of the, the sports locker rooms are completely, the lockers are completely rusted out and need to be replaced. I mean, it's, it's an older building and a lot of things do need to be replaced and new systems put in place. So thank you very much for your attention. I'm going to pass this off to Steve Moore, who's going to talk about the all-important financial part of this. Thank you.
Mr. Moore, if you could keep it to about three minutes, please.
Perfect. Steve Moore, Assistant Superintendent, Blue Hills Regional Technical School. $84.6 million. It's not a cheap project, but I hope you're going to understand as you deliberate tonight that it is a great investment in your technical school. It's a great investment for your students so this building can continue to go forward. $3.4 million is the cost to Milton with interest over 30 years. The first payment will not start until 2020 and we're projecting that at $86,000 additional assessment. That's based on a 3% interest rate and that the bank is telling us that that is doable. Also, the district will be reducing the, the borrowing costs are about $2 million a year to repay. The district has $600,000 in a capital fund that it's been using to improve the building for the last 20 or 30 years. We'll be able to take some of that money because we will have a lower need for capital improvements, put that in to reduce the borrowing cost. So the projected range for the 20 years borrowing to the town of Milton will be $86,000 in the initial years and would top out at $115,000 as the project progresses. Next slide. How the calculation is figured out for what Milton will pay of the share of the $38.6 million that the district will end up borrowing is its average enrollment for a four-year period. So you can see that Milton's enrollment has roughly been a little over five, almost 6% of the total school population. I can't tell you what it's going to be in 20 years. I can show you what it's been. So the cost should be fairly stable in the near future and, and going into the distant future. So just last slide. Why this project? Why now? First of all, with the MSBA reimbursement, this is the lowest cost option you're going to get. The MSBA is giving us a true 50% reimbursement. Any delays on this project or deciding to chunk it out into smaller projects, we're facing a 5% escalation in project cost each year. So a one-year delay would add $3 to $4 million in the project cost. MSBA is giving us $43 million. They don't care when we do it. We're getting $43 million. Any cost escalation is 100% borne on the member towns. Our master plan facility study done six years ago says the repairs need to be done. The systems are failing. It's a 50-year-old building. You know from your homes, when things get old, stuff starts to break. That's what's happening here. Eventually, the building won't be able to support your students and the programs that they need. And then lastly, it's 2017. This building needs to be accessible to everyone. It is not. And we also need to upgrade and protect your investment in this school by putting in the life safety systems, the fire extinguishing systems, and everything necessary to make your students safe and this building to continue to last for 50 years. And finally, these repairs allow the school to continue its mission of educating the students of Milton who have chosen a vocational education. Thank you for your no vote on this article.
Frank Giuliani, excuse me. Precinct 3 and former superintendent of schools. And I was up here, and I've been retired for 23 years or something like that, I don't know. But I was here to recommend that we join the Blue Hills Regional Vocational School. And you did, you did vote that. And it's very, very important for our kids to have this kind of, this opportunity. As I understand it, we have about 50 students in this program. And, you know, my own background is academic, mathematics and stuff like that, but I also know how to do plumbing and electricity. I owned houses that I rented out. And those skills are so, so important that you don't normally get in a, in a normal public school. And here we have a vocational school that allows these youngsters to pick up these skills and work and get good jobs and feel good about themselves. It's so, so important. Now, I don't know, I know, because we just did all our buildings over, every single building in this town is relatively new. That was for our academic kids. Now we have youngsters who are, who are in the vocational school who need the same kind of support. I don't know all the details of the building and maybe the Board of Selectmen know why they said no to, to this. There must be something that in, in the building construction or whatever, I'd like to know why they would say no when they would say yes to our children who do not go to the vocational school. But it's very, very important that these kids get their, get their education, get their skills, go out in the workplace. Right, now, they also go into the college level also. There are youngsters who go to vocational school, they'll also go into the universities. But basically, these jobs are very, very important to them and I would expect you to, to support them, just as you supported the programs when I was a superintendent of schools and when Mary was a superintendent of schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. And thank you, Dr. Giuliani. Actually, it's the opposite. The Board of Selectmen supports this, okay? So we, we are encouraging a no, a no vote. We feel that Blue Hills Regional Technical School provides great opportunity for our community and that, you know, we don't know what the future lies ahead. And to take away opportunities from some of these kids in our town who may want to have a trade, it would, it would be, it would be really difficult for us to, to not support that. So we are in support of this and urge a voter no. Thank you.
Mr. Corkman, are you waiting to speak?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ned Corker in Precinct 3. It's not, not ordinary that the families of kids at the Blue Hills Regional get well-represented in the process of these discussions. Our youngest is a, is a junior at Blue Hills Regional. He's adopted. He has different learning requirements. Blue Hills Regional has been an extraordinary place for him. I'm also an assistant rugby coach there. I coach rugby here at Milton High. I coach at Blue Hills. They're phenomenal kids. We voted as a town several times to raise our own debt ceiling to fund our schools. This is one of our schools. There's a bus that comes through Milton every morning at 6 o'clock or 7 o'clock and picks these that comes through Milton every morning at six o'clock or seven o'clock and picks these kids up and takes them to Canton and drops them off at the end of the day. My son is in a culinary program, but there are seventeen different shop programs that are available for these kids. They go to class for a week. They're in shop for a week. They have homework that's due on the following Monday during shop week, and then they go back into regular class week. They take all the same courses that our students take at Milton High School. They also have shop. And it affords them a different way to learn and it affords them skills to take on beyond that. A number of the kids there go to college. Some go to regular four-year schools. Some go into specific schools that are dedicated to the types of learning that they've had. But it is an extraordinary program. And I would urge this body to support the recommendation of the, of the Selectmen, vote no, so that we can support the, the funds that are necessary to support this project. Thank you.
Mr. Walker, Mr. Walker McLean, and then Frizzetti in that order.
I have kind of a compromise proposal. I'm in support of the Blue Hills Technical School, as most of you are. And I agree with both Dr. Giuliani and Mr. Corcoran that this certainly warrants our support at some point. The concern that I have in comparing the proposal that we've seen to what you normally receive from your public schools here and drawing on the experience that I've had on your capital improvement planning committee, in every single case, you receive detailed information about what the various projects are. You receive detailed information about what the cost of those projects are. You receive a debt service schedule if you're being asked to take on capital debt. And most importantly, you receive a chart that tells you what the impact to Milton taxpayers is. So while I think that in general, it sounds like these are good investments, I would say to you that we have an obligation to understand very clearly what the debt service schedule is and what the impact on Milton taxpayers is before we approve the proposal. Thank you.
Mr. McLean?
Good evening, Mr. McLean, Lee Michael McLean, Precinct Ten Town Meeting Member. Mr. Moderator, I'm seeking clarification on what a yes and a no vote by the body will mean. And I want to use an example. I support the expenditure of money for the Blue Hill School. And as a town meeting member, I am voting to either accept the recommendation of the warrant committee or reject the recommendation of the warrant committee. If I vote yes, then I am agreeing with the warrant committee for a no. If I vote no, then I'm rejecting the recommendation of the warrant committee. I think, I think we need to think this through because I think we have it backwards.
So I will defer to Town Council for that answer. It's a good question.
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, the article is perhaps confusing, but the reason it is, is because the way the statute is worded. The, the enabling statute for this is Chapter Seventy-One, Section Sixteen. And it says that, it talks about a proposal like this from your regional vocational school district. And it says, "If at that meeting a majority of the votes that is present and voting express disapproval of the amount authorized by the district committee, the debt shall not be incurred and it goes on to explain the process in other towns." This is not a misprint. The warrant article is properly drafted. It, it's phrasing the negative, but that's because of what the General Court decided. The comment of the, the recommendation of the warrant committee is appropriate because your warrant committee is asking you to vote no on a question of whether to disapprove of the district school committee's request for money. It, it, it is proper under the statute and the warrant committee's comment explains it properly. If town meeting votes yes on the article, you have disapproved the request of the, of the Blue Hills Regional School District. If town meeting votes no on the article, you have said no to disapproval. You have said, "We approve of the request." Don't shoot the messenger. That's the way our General Court worded it. But the warrant is correct. The recommendation is correct. And the comment of the warrant committee is correct.
Mr. Morash, I think you were next.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yikes. I support this. In the words of Bill Russell, "They're all our kids." And these kids are our kids here in Milton as well. And they deserve our support. I'd, I'd like a clarification. In the last couple of sentences in the first paragraph of the comment, "A no vote will result in no action by the town on the request." "In early November, a formal request will be made by the regional school district to each of the member towns in the district. Each town will then have sixty days to act on this formal request. If no action is taken by the town within the sixty-day period, the town will be deemed to have approved the request." My friend, Mr. Walker asked, "What is this really going to cost us?" So my question is, if we vote no to this, and I intend to vote no on this request tonight, are we saying we will have another presentation by the school board for the Blue Hills to this town meeting? And then, within sixty days of that presentation, are we coming back to town meeting to approve funding this project? Or by doing nothing, do we just sit on our hands and this gets done? It's a done deal? And we have not met our fiduciary responsibilities to this town's taxpayers?
Mr., I'm sorry, there's pointing. So let's have a consult here. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It's a, a couple of questions. The, the way the Massachusetts Legislature, Legislature wrote the legislation on this was that towns had, our school committee voted on September nineteenth to request approval from the towns. But actually, by requesting approval, the, the action is that we're requesting no action, so that there is no required action to support this by any of the legislative bodies of the member towns. The only action that the state requires is a, is a no vote, to say, "No, we do not approve the borrowing." So a, a number of our communities are not having town meetings, so they are, have by default approved this. This will be our only appearance here because the time limit for this runs out on November eighteenth. So that's when the sixty-day sunset. So if this town meeting tonight were to take no action, not vote at all, just pass on the amendment, then unless you reconvene at another time to vote, it would be, have deemed to have passed by the fact that you did not take a negative action. So the warrant article is written to request a negative action, whereas you want to reject that, at least that's our opinion at Blue Hills. Does that...
I understand what you said. But, Mr. Moderator, my question still stands. By voting no and going along with the recommendation of the warrant committee tonight, is this body approving this project moving forward with no further information?
Can I have, Town Council, can you answer that for us?
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, a couple of members have asked that same question. Because of the way the statute is worded, in my opinion, if town meeting votes no, that is your way of saying, "We do not disapprove of this request. We approve of it," and the process will go on. But you are on record as saying, "We vote no on a request to disapprove it," because that's the way the statute is worded. So to say it another way, if town meeting is in favor of the request that the school, the Blue Hills Regional District Committee has put before you, then the proper vote is no because of the way the statute is worded.
So, excuse me, Mr. Flynn, I'm not sure that quite answered Mr. Morash's question. So perhaps I might help. So if I'm looking at the paragraph in the top of twenty-two, it says, I'm looking at the last two sentences, two-thirds down in that top paragraph. "A no vote will result in no action by the town on the request. In early November of 2017," right, "a formal request will be made by the regional school district to each of the member towns in the district. Each town will then have sixty days from then," which would go to something like at the worst case, January thirty-one?
No, November eighteen.
No, November eighteen, "to act on that request." If, so, that will happen before the May town meeting. Mr. Morash?
Correct.
Which means that we will approve the authorization of the debt tonight with a no vote, and there will not be another chance for this body to vote before the May town meeting. Is that correct?
That, that's, that's correct. Just if I could add, add one thing. Also, the, the debt itself is being taken on by the regional school. Milton will be assessed for the debt through the operating budget of Blue Hills. So there is no borrowing that Milton is doing. There's no debt schedule associated with Milton. There is a debt schedule associated with the district. The numbers that I gave you are the estimated costs. We're looking at a, a level debt model over thirty years to do that. So that's in the eighty-five to one nineteen, I think, range that I showed you earlier. So there, it's, it's part of it. It's an operational budget expense.
Mr. Moderator, I'm still troubled with this word, with this sentence. "In early November, a formal request will be made by the regional school district to each of the members' towns in the district." Is this the formal request with no money behind it? I wish it would be this easy to build these schools.
Let it, let me try to find it. Let me pause a minute and just see if we can get this.
I'm reading it three times. Please clarify that for us.
This is the formal request this evening to this body. We will make the same request to all nine communities. Should one community say no, then, under Massachusetts law, Chapter Seventy-One, Section Sixteen D, then we cannot, we are not authorized to do the borrowing. However, the legislature did put another option in there, and that is a district-wide ballot referendum. So should one community vote now, whether it's Milton or one of the others, the district then would have a district-wide ballot referendum as soon as possible because it fights the cost escalation if we can do it quickly. And then it's a simple majority of all nine towns. It's not one town's vote. It's all nine towns. So it's everybody in the district, one vote, more in favor, and it passes. And Milton is on the hook for the, the cost at that time as well.
So early November really means mid to late October, correct? And after we take this vote tonight, it says, "This town has sixty days to act on that formal request." Yes?
Just a second.
And if we do nothing, then it says sixty days, we, we say yes, we're going to go along with this project?
By all...
Yeah, please.
By all of our legal counsel advice and everything else, this is from MSBA, this is from our counsel, from everything else. Everyone says the sixty days commences with the vote of the school committee. Not sixty days from tonight. Not, that, that November wording, wording in there is, is cloudy and I don't think it holds any water because it's, it's not adhered to that way. Otherwise, everyone would have to have their, their votes scheduled within a timeframe that isn't necessarily realistic to them. So that when the school committee voted on September nineteenth, I believe it was, yes, that commenced the sixty-day period, which ends in the third week of, of November.
I agree with you, sir. This is very convoluted and not clear at all. And I would tell you, if I came before this body with a motion, "This clear," I'd be outside that door on the exit. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Frizzetti, I think you were waiting. Is that right? Sorry, I'm hard, if anyone is not trying to speak, if you could step away from those first two aisles, that would be helpful.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Steve Frizzetti, Town Meeting, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Seven and Member of the Board of Cemetery Trustees. I fully support doing the renovations at the Blue Hills Vocational School. I myself am a product of a vocational school, not, not that one in particular, but another one in the area. And it is important that our kids learn these, these skills if they, or if they desire. My problem is, you're spending a lot of money on Hy-Vac, IT, there's some plumbing. Aren't these skills that we're teaching the kids? And is this labor that the kids can be doing?
Yes, that question comes up very, very often. Can we get the, the, the students involved in this? They are not licensed professionals. They could never perform in that environment. They are in no way prepared to, to start on that level of production. In fact, they can't even legally work alongside of any of the trade unions or any of the licensed contractors that, that would be involved. They can certainly observe. It can be a teaching environment for them because you're bringing a large-scale project to them. But there are actually a couple of things that can be done. And one of them in particular is if, and I've discussed this with, with our design firm and with our own as project manager, for instance, our, our carpentry program, if, would they needed five hundred feet of milled handrail? And instead of procuring that, if it were produced in the school, that's something where we're actually producing supplies for the project. But when you get into labor, it's incredibly dicey. And we would not be able to cross that, that line.
Thank you. Ma'am?
I'm Marital Flight. I come from Precinct Five. And I taught at the Blue Hill Regional School for over twenty years. It was a great experience because when I first went there, there weren't any girls. And when I left, we had about two hundred and fifty. So it's not just the male laboring people who are the professionals in keeping our houses going, helping to build, taking care of our property, that have benefited by their education at the Blue Hill Regional School. It was a different experience. It was not anything that one could train for because we had many deaf students come through. We had many who were very difficult to handle. We had many charms. We had many who went through the electric program and came out and got their, whatever their certification is. I honestly, it was twenty years ago, some more than that now. And I can't remember what they actually got. But they went out and they did get all of the certifications that they needed. And in the carpentry program, we really have a great credit to give to Festus Joyce, who is a Milton Town person and taught there. Festus was one of the greatest teachers, and that's what made the difference in his pupils. And that's what makes a big difference in the pupils who go to the Blue Hill Regional School. Now you can have your hair done. And I bet you could have it cut if you were a man, if you, if that is what you wanted. It's, it's just a great school. Some of our students in the Health Services Program, which was the program that I was involved with, went on and became doctors. We had many nurses. These are young people that probably may, may have gotten into trouble in another environment. These are young people that probably may, may have gotten into trouble in another environment, but they were just a part of the school, and they enjoyed it. And we need to support it. Milton has not had to spend a great, great deal for the maintenance, et cetera, of that school. It's your students, it's my students that went through, that came through. And you know, one day, I went into a restaurant, and there was my most unbelievable student. I was invited to have breakfast with him. I was invited to meet his children and his wife. And it was just a great experience, and it's your experience too, because Milton has supported this in the past, and we need to support them now.
Mr. Zulus, did you want to speak?
Mr. Moderator, Mike Zulus, precinct three, town meeting member. I apologize if I'm being obtuse, but I just want to make sure I get this right. If I want there to be a no vote to approve the debt, a no vote to approve the debt authorization, then I want to vote aye to accept, that, no, no, well, hold on, hold on, hold on. Don't I want to accept the recommendation of the warrant committee to vote no? Or am I, have I got it wrong?
Nope. I'll repeat, you vote no.
I want to vote no to accept the no recommendation of the warrant committee?
No.
I just want to vote no. Oh, I see, I see. So, there's no aye. I see. Got it?
Got it.
All right. So, I was being obtuse. That's now clear. I got it. Thank you.
Ms. Agostino, you're next.
Diana Tuleo Agostino, precinct nine, town meeting member and chair of the Commission on Disability. I completely understand why everyone seems confused, and during the school building projects, Mary Gormley will probably attest that I asked more questions about the funding, about the construction, and everything else. And I'm standing here tonight to say, I am voting no in agreement with the warrant committee to make sure that this town allows the Blue Hill Regional School that has waited, what, six years for this project? Because if you do a little bit of reading to understand the background, and it's all in there. And I always, you know, I'm always questioning the money. This school must move forward. What's different now is that we have a Massachusetts School Building Authority. The authority has done all the due diligence. So, in a way, it seems like, oh, they're just walking in here saying, give us, by the way, they're getting 55.9% reimbursed by the state, so they did their homework there. But this new building authority even reviews who the design committee was and everything. So, I would suggest that we follow forward, move on, vote no, get this school up to speed because I think it really is a great little secret where many students excel, and I thank you all for the work you're doing to improve it, especially the ADA accessibility. Thank you.
Mr. Feigh.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sean Feigh, precinct nine. I also rise to vote no, which, as I've written it here for myself, a no vote is yes for the funding. I am the president of a commercial construction company, and every single day, we see a continuing decline in the number of tradesmen that, that, that exist in the marketplace today. As Ned Corkman said earlier, I think Blue Hills Regional offers an avenue for kids that prefer not to have an academic college experience and, and gives them an opportunity for a tremendous career in whatever trade they choose. So, I am in favor of a no vote in providing funding for the school. I have two questions on the business side of it. I find myself also very cost-conscious, and 85 million is a, is a big dollar value. One, I'd like to know, how has the cost of the project been determined? The article does read, is expected to cost 85 million. So, I would like some definition on how we've arrived at an $85 million dollar value. One of the speakers earlier had spoken to the fact that there's very little detail on this dollar value. And my second question is, if the project cost changes, what happens to the assessment of the town of Milton? If the project cost goes down, does our assessment go down? If the project cost rises, does our assessment rise?
Yes, Mr. Qualia.
Thank you. The cost of the project, I don't know why it says 85, but the actual, you saw it on the first slide that come up here, it was 86.8. That is a fixed number. There's a contingency built into that, so that there's actually a possibility that it could come in under that if we do not need to attach all of the contingency. And before I go much further, those of you that, that have technology at your, at your access right now, renovatebluehills.com, www.renovatebluehills.com. Almost every single detail that you would need to know is there, including all of the meeting minutes that we've had from the very beginning. So, the cost doesn't change. And the reason why it won't change is because it can't. It can't. There's, there's no way that once an agreement is made with towns, that you come back and ask for any more money. The only way that, that the amount that a town would be assessed through their budgetary request every year would be if the population trends differently over time. This, the population is, it's a four-year average, and it rolls over time. So, that four-year average may change. However, if you looked at the figures that Mr. Moore had up on screen, you'll see that roughly 5.5% is, is, has been the average over the last several years. So, you can probably count on that going forward, which means that there will be no, no radical change through that mechanism. So, the answer is no. No, no, no change will happen. That's what we work within. That's the, the figure that's set for the project. Absolutely no higher than that.
All right. I see two to three speakers, and I'd like to go to a vote. So, ma'am in first, front row?
Renit Void, town meeting member, precinct two. I think most of us are in favor of a no vote. I do feel that we do have a fiduciary responsibility to really get the numbers. And when I was on the warrant committee in the early 90s, we asked that we get some balance sheets and some budget line items, and we were told that, you know, if Milton did not vote the budget, then the whole, we could not participate in the program. Since we have such two distinguished gentlemen here, I just hope in the future that we get some numbers and a budget for future town meetings so we can give the budget the same scrutiny that we give all our other departments. Thank you.
Ms. Gankarski?
Joan Gankarski, precinct one. Moderator, yes, you have just mentioned this. I would like to call the question.
Um, town council to, you want to speak? Just a moment. Yeah. I don't know. This is a big conference for us. This is our first town meeting. Hang on. A yes vote means you disapprove of the taking on of the, of the debt, and no vote means you approve of the taking on of the debt. All those, um, approving, all those in favor, let me get the wording right. I want to get the wording right. All those in favor of the article as written, please say aye. Hang on. The article says disapprove. Right? Okay. All those who don't support the article, both no. Yes. Right. It's confusing. So... I think we might both calmly, like... No, I actually think the, it's even more problematic. No, I think it's like he's, he's got the vote. I think he's doing it, but maybe it's a common, I don't know. No, it's, no, it's, 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 Town Council.
I think I'm gonna need a police escort to leave here tonight. But please bear with me. This is slightly different from what... It's the same intent, but... And a member just raised that, and I apologize for not... The moderator's fifth rule, which you operate under, does talk about a no vote. And the gentleman who made that point, thank you for making it. And that's what the colloquy was about here, so... The moderator suggested, and I agree with the suggestion, that he will explain it this way. All those in favor of the warrant committee's recommendation to vote no, please say aye. Several of you have asked that, and I apologize for the confusion.
So. Here's what you're gonna do. You're thinking about this for a minute. We apologize for the language left with us at the statute. So I'm gonna say the words. All those in... Don't answer yet. All those in... All those in favor of a no vote on the article, on the recommendation of the warrant committee, I'm gonna say it right. Say aye. I said, "Don't say aye." Ah, yeah. False start. Okay? All right? And then if you are opposed to the no vote, so you'll end up disapproving, you'll say no. Okay? Double negative. That's right. All those in favor of a no vote on the recommendation of the warrant committee, say aye. All opposed? The motion carries. Entertained a motion to recess till tomorrow night? Seconded? All in favor, aye? And we are recessed. Thank you to everyone for coming, and the meeting will come to order. I'd like to start the meeting with an explanation of last night's vote on Article Five. The reason is, uh, there turns out there was quite a bit of confusion, and I think, uh, per my instructions, we executed it incorrectly. So. When in doubt, go back to the rules. So, we're gonna go back to the rules. And Ms. Martin, if you had a chance to possibly display up on the screen, the text? So these are the rules from your May 2017 warrant. Focusing on the fifth rule. I'll let you read through it, but the key point is, uh, the last two sentences down at the bottom. In the event that the warrant committee recommends a no vote on an article, the question will be presented as a vote on a motion made and seconded to approve the article. In other words, the members will vote yes if they favor the article, and no if they oppose the article as recommended by the warrant committee. So. Before we... I entertain a motion to reconsider. Let me explain what that means. I would say, forget what you said last night. Instead, consider what your intent was last night. So if your intent was to do what the article said, you... Tonight, you would vote aye. If your intent was to do what the warrant committee said, and vote no, you would vote no. And the article would not pass. All... Okay, so here's the rules on reconsidering, uh, um, articles. They can be reconsidered within one hour of their vote, uh, by a simple majority, or by a two-thirds vote if it's after an hour. So we closed at ten fifty-six last night. It's been less than an hour since we reconvened. So at this point, I just need a majority vote. All those in favor of reconsidering the vote on Article Five, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The motion carries. At this point, I would... I do not want to entertain any discussion on the content of Article Five. I'm willing to, uh, answer any questions on how we'll vote tonight. Was my language clear?
Peter Mullen, Precinct Two. I'm not sure, once you have a motion to reconsider on the floor, that you can limit it to not discussing the content of the vote.
I'm asking the audience's indulgence, perhaps.
Well, I want to make sure that the body understands what they're doing. This article seeks the disapproval of the debt exclusion... Or the debt, uh, that was proposed for the Blue Hill School. Therefore, a yes vote is to disapprove the debt. A no vote is to approve the school being able to borrow money.
That is correct.
Therefore, if you want the school to get the money, you want to vote no.
That... Mr. Mullen is correct. Any other questions on how to vote, rather than your voting decision? Okay, here's the exact language. I'll read them both before anybody votes, so we're all clear. So all members in favor of the article, say aye. The other will be, all members opposed to the article, say no. With that, uh, this requires a simple majority. All members in favor of the article, say aye. All members opposed to the article, say no. The motion is defeated. Thank you. With that, we can proceed to Article Six. Article Six is on page twenty-three. Recommended that the town vote to amend the general bylaws of the town of Milton by adding a new Chapter Twenty-Five to read as follows. Chapter Twenty-Five, Prohibition on Marijuana Establishments. In accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Ninety-four G, Section Three A Two, all types of marijuana establishments as defined in Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Forty-nine G... Excuse me. Ninety-four G, Section One, and as may otherwise be defined by Massachusetts law or regulation to include without limitation all marijuana cultivators, marijuana testing facilities, marijuana product manufacturers, marijuana retailers, onsite consumption at a business location, any other types of licensed marijuana-related businesses, and the conducting of any such activity for commercial purposes by whichever name used shall be prohibited within the town of Milton. This prohibition shall not be construed to affect the medical use of marijuana as expressly authorized by the provisions of Chapter Three-Six-Nine of the Acts of Twenty-Two and One-Zero-Five CMR seven-hundred-and-twenty-five-point-zero-zero-zero, as the same may be amended from time to time. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board. Uh, to start with, I'd like to recognize Chairman Burns.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So I just think that it makes sense for me to articulate why we have two, uh, two articles here. So, um, with respect to the two bylaw approach to banning recreational marijuana in Milton, we're recommending this approach because the revised recreational marijuana does not specify which kind of bylaw is required to effectuate such a ban or limit. As revised in July two thousand seventeen, the law only says the ban must take place by a law... Bylaw? Excuse me? Or ordinance, with no further specification. Currently, the municipal unit of the Attorney General's Office is recommending a zoning bylaw because the regulating placement of structures is a question of zoning. But the other issues, such as licensing, may be more appropriate for a general bylaw. The AG is not only enforcing agency of marijuana laws, but Cannabis Control Commission regulations are not scheduled to be issued until March two thousand eighteen. So because we cannot predict if a later date, one or the other would be preferred, we suggest doing both, so that the communities are so covered. The AG has approved both kinds of bylaws, and other communities are also doing both. Finally, as a reminder, the town did vote fifty-four percent against recreational marijuana. So I just wanted to make that clear for everyone, uh, before we got into the discussion. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to recognize Chairman Whiteside of the Planning Board.
Alexander Whiteside, Chairman of the Planning Board, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Nine. The Planning Board feels that the voters have spoken, and, uh, it's wise to, um, listen to them, and prohibiting marijuana establishments in Milton, um, seems like a sound idea, um, and we recommend that you do so.
There's a man who wants to get done tonight. Um, next, by prior request, Caroline Cancela from the Board of Health asked to speak to this article.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Caroline Cancela, Precinct Eight, Town Meeting Member. Good evening. My name is Caroline Cancela, and I'm the Chair of the Milton Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition, an organization four years young. Three hundred and seventy-five members strong, working together to prevent the epidemic of substance abuse and addiction in our town. This is no small problem. On July eighteenth, twenty seventeen, the Milton Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition's core stakeholder group and steering committee representing town leaders from the police department, schools, the faith community, healthcare, youth organizations, academia, and people in recovery unanimously voted to oppose any recreational marijuana establishments to be located in our community. Many of us have children in our school systems, and would love to see new funding streams come to our town. However, not at the expense of our children, nor in the midst of the worst drug epidemic our country has ever seen. In Milton, we had six deaths in twenty sixteen due to drug addiction, and our parent survey that included eight hundred parents indicated that one in five households in Milton has someone in recovery. Let's be clear that addiction is a devastating adolescent brain disease, and it almost always begins when youth's brains are exposed to substances that provide a high. There is also an inherited component, which means that about one in five children in Milton are at a greater risk of addiction as they grow older. In the United States, eighty-eight thousand people died of alcohol, and another forty-three thousand died of drug-related deaths in twenty fourteen. Many of those deaths had to do with drunk or drugged driving. Addiction costs our country a whopping four-hundred-and-forty-two billion dollars a year in healthcare, mental health, disability, and lost work productivity costs. The costs of this disease are far greater than any revenues we might receive from pot shops brought into Milton. Whether or not you believe marijuana is harmful to adults is your decision to make. I am here to tell you the harm to youth which is clear. Research suggests that regular use of marijuana during adolescence may result in problems with memory, attention, and learning, poor performance in schools, and the increased risk of dropout, increased likelihood of use of alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs, and development of mental health issues such as impaired emotional development, depression, anxiety, and psychotic symptoms. Moreover, marijuana is addicted for some. It is not the same potency that it was when we were kids. It is much stronger, and some of the synthetic types are laced with substances such as nicotine that makes it more addictive. While approximately nine percent of regular users overall become addicted to marijuana, about seventeen percent of those who start during adolescence become addicted. In Milton, five percent of residents who went into public rehab centers had marijuana addiction as their primary diagnosis. All of them were Milton adolescents. In twenty fourteen, the Center for Disease Control's Youth Risk Behavior Survey showed that Milton adolescents used marijuana significantly more frequently than the nation's youth on average. About one-third of our kids used marijuana in the prior month that the survey was taken. And now, lots of kids are vaping the stuff, which makes it easier to conceal. Delaying use makes a difference. The longer young people wait before they use marijuana or any other substances, the less likely they are to develop problems later on in life. But because adolescent brains are not fully developed until age twenty-five, they are much more prone to taking risks and seeking excitement by using illicit substances, and they are clever about getting it. We know that making it harder for kids to get access to alcohol and drugs makes it less likely they are to use them. By sanction... By sanctioning recreational marijuana retail shops in town, we are not only making it easier for kids to get a hold of it, we are also giving our youth the message that marijuana isn't very harmful. The potential extra money or jobs we get from recreational marijuana retail presence in our town just isn't worth it. In the Coalition's opinion, the cost far exceeds the benefits. The Milton Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition asks you to support this article. Thank you.
Are you interested in speaking to the article? Ms. Milbauer? She's... I think you're on, uh... Are you on, uh... This article? Uh, okay, we can recognize you now. Um, by prior arrangement, uh, one of the citizens who's a, um, a registered voter contacted me in advance. We validated her, uh, active voter status. Please, uh, come to the mic. Just say your name. You can stand right there. Should work tonight. Say your name and address, and, uh, you've got up to ten minutes.
Hi. It really works tonight. My goodness. My name is Margie Skier. I'm from Precinct Seven. And I want to thank you, Moderator Hiss, and all the town committee members for allowing me to speak tonight on behalf of this article. I'm a resident of Milton, and I'm here as a concerned citizen, but I'm also here as an expert in the field. I am an associate professor at the Tufts University School of Medicine in the Department of Public Health and Community Medicine. Is this very tinny? Can you hear me okay? Go to the other one. Okay. Is that... Is that right? Mr. Moderator?
You can rotate through.
Just to get a different perspective. So I'm an associate professor at Tufts University, and I have spent the last over twenty years working on adolescent substance use as an... As an issue. I started working in drug rehabilitation centers, working with young people, eighteen-to-twenty year olds who were addicted to drugs, addicted to heroin, and saw how devastating it was to their lives. And I therefore went and decided to spend my career trying to prevent addiction and substance use among adolescents. I also teach about substance use and addiction to, um, graduate students at Tufts, both MD students who are learning to work as clinicians and public health students. So why am I here tonight? I'm here tonight because, as we know, Massachusetts voted to legalize recreational marijuana in November. And as, um, Caroline Cancela had just said, I am less concerned about adults who are responsible, who are of age, who go and purchase marijuana at dispensaries. However, I am really concerned about youth and access, as we just heard. The Massachusetts... The Milton Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition, as you just heard, is doing an incredible job. I am an active member, and I'm very invested in this coalition. And banning recreational marijuana establishments will really be far-reaching with respect to the prevention efforts that's happening. We just heard so much about brain science and about how much marijuana really does affect the developing brain, that the brain starts this massive restructuring around puberty, and it really doesn't stop until the mid to late twenties. And think about what happens to the brain when marijuana and those chemicals start getting into it. This does have long, long-reaching effects. We also just heard that access is associated with use. And so if you think about what teens use, we know that teens are more likely to use alcohol, prescription medications, because they can get it from their friends and family. In fact, over fifty percent of teens who use prescription medications get it from friends and family. It's because of access. They're also more likely to use chemicals. There's, uh, inhalants, huffing, that they find in their kitchen cabinets. So if we think about access, that's gonna be the point of where we're really gonna see a problem. So if we increase the access here, it's gonna create further problems down the road. We also know that, um, research shows that proximity to alcohol outlets, for example, is associated with increased use. So again, yes, alcohol is out there. It exists. Teens get their hands on it. But the closer teens live in proximity to alcohol establishments, the more likely they are to be using it. And the denser we have those establishments, the worse off it is as well. I also wanted to take a minute to talk about marijuana edibles, which is also called, um, infused marijuana products, as they relate to retail establishments. In the first quarter of two thousand fourteen, in Colorado, the year that marijuana became legal... Legal for recreational use, edibles made up thirty percent of the sales. By the third quarter of two thousand sixteen, that grew to forty-five... By the third quarter of two thousand and sixteen, that grew to forty-five percent. So what that means is about half of sales of recreational marijuana is in edible form. Now, these are not the pot brownies that maybe you knew growing up, you know, people put a little pot, some brownies, they cook it, you know, give it to their friends. This is an unbelievable industry. I went to Denver in November, or late October of last year, it was about a week before the election, and I said to a colleague, "I need to go to dispensary." I swear it was for research purposes only, I promise. And I also got to go to a growing facility. And I don't know if people have been to dispensaries, but it is unbelievable, the sheer variety of edible products that are available for purchase. It looked like a movie concession stand, the ten different kinds of candy bars, the cookies, the brownies, the beef jerky, the pasta sauce, the granola, the lip balm, the marijuana soda, the marijuana coffee, I mean, it's unbelievable. And I was just testifying at the Cannabis Control Commission, Massachusetts, a week and a half ago, to urge them to regulate edibles, because we are creating a problem that we may not be able to solve. So even if dispensaries are ironclad with respect to not allowing those who are under twenty-one into the door, because the one that I went to was really incredible, but we know that teens will be getting it from their older siblings, they'll be getting it from their friends who go in and purchase it. And so we can't have it as close by as in Milton. Problems with edibles are not only for teens, but we know that in Colorado as well, there was a five-fold increase in visits to poison control centers and emergency departments among children ten years and under between two thousand and nine and two thousand and fifteen, related to accidentally ingesting edible marijuana, and that was mainly baked goods, candy, and popcorn, of all things.
Excuse me, ma'am, you have four minutes.
Okay, thank you. The other thing about edibles is that it reduces the risk perception of adolescents. We know from research that when young people perceive drugs to be lower risk, such as prescription drugs, because they think, "Oh, a doctor's prescribing it, it's not as harmful as other drugs." We know that as risk perception goes down, use goes up. There is an inverse relationship, and we've seen it over time. Edibles reduce the risk. Think about it, if you have a twelve, thirteen-year-old thinking, "I'm not going to smoke a joint, but I'll eat that candy over there," it's a much shorter leap to start thinking about using drugs in this manner. The other thing about edibles is that teens have said, current research has said, teens have said that it reduces their risk of getting caught, because they don't smell like pot. They even say that they've used it in schools because of this reason. Their qualitative research has shown that teens are also using edibles because it doesn't make them feel like a drug user in the way that smoking a drug does. So I believe that we really have a problem, because it can be used covertly. The ladies that I was chatting with in line at the dispensary were telling me all the ways that they covertly bring marijuana edibles on the plane, they're mailing it, I mean, all these things. So it's in our midst, but let's not put it right in Milton. So I will close by saying that, as we just heard, the younger people are when they start using substances, the worse off it is for them over time. Nine out of ten people who are addicted to alcohol or drugs started using before the age of eighteen. This is huge because of what we know about the brain.
You have two minutes, ma'am. Two minutes.
Thank you. Teens here will still be able to access marijuana, and marijuana-infused products will go up, definitely. But why should we make it easier for them to do it? So banning retail establishments will really help the efforts of the Coalition, it will help change norms in our town, and it really will help us keep our teens safe. Thank you.
Can you guys hear me? Okay. Deborah Milbauer, Precinct Four, Town Meeting Member. I've been a Town Meeting Member for nine years, and I've never spoken in front of this body, so I'm a little nervous. I rise to address this article tonight because of the many ways this issue intersects with my personal and professional life. In addition to being a Town Meeting Member, I also help organize the Pine Tree Brook Neighborhood Association. I have a dual Masters in Public Health and Social Work, and teach public health as an adjunct at Northeastern. Most recently, I have been working with cities and towns throughout Massachusetts, giving them guidance on well-planned prevention programs based on science and local data. And I'm actively involved with the Milton Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition. And by the way, thank you to everyone's amazing support for the very successful 5K on Saturday. However, the area that I have the most expertise is as parent, in that I am the mother of a fifth grader at Glover and the mother of a ninth grader here at Milton High School. I fully support the Selectmen's article and want to thank them for taking the lead on this important issue. The science of, and you have just heard some of this, I'm going to reiterate it, the science of substance use and misuse prevention is grounded on the premise that adolescent teen brains are still developing, and any drinking or smoking done as a teenager is not as innocuous as it seems. When I first began to understand the research, I realized that the attitude that says, "Oh, kids will be kids," is not only misleading, but it means adults are actually complicit in harming our children's brains, which don't really fully develop until age twenty-five, as you just heard. Is this sounding weird? Okay. Therefore, my job as a parent is to do everything I can to delay first use, whether that means my daughter's first beer, first smoke, or first pill. Research shows that the longer she holds off, the better she will be in the long run. I have substance use disorder in my family, so my daughter is at higher risk. So I have a personal stake in this article tonight. There are many evidence-based ways to reduce underage drinking and other drug use, including messaging, strong messaging from parents and adults in the community. And as Professor Skier said, access, and as Caroline Kinsella said, access is really critical. Access means that the less kids can get their hands on beer, cigarettes, marijuana, or pills, the less likely they are to use them. In fact, the Coalition, this is a PSA, is collaborating with the Milton Police Department this weekend on Saturday. We're doing a drug take-back from ten to two, if anybody wants to bring their expired or unused medications to the Police Department on Saturday. But the reason we're doing this in collaboration with the Police is to get to reduce access to pills. So we appreciate the Police Department's annual support, they do it actually every year. And herein lies the problem. Having recreational marijuana facilities in our town, no matter how closely guarded, will increase access to marijuana for our teenagers. We know by experience and research that teens have very easy access to alcohol, even though the drinking age is twenty-one and over. Having laws that bar kids under the age of twenty-one to purchase marijuana does not mean that they won't have access to it anyway. Many big brothers or older friends buy alcohol on behalf of a minor and get paid a few bucks in return. That's how a lot of teens in town get alcohol, is they'll have an older brother buy it for them. Please, let's not allow recreational pot shops in town. It will significantly increase the amount of marijuana floating around our community. We can pretend it will only be sold to adults, but I've seen the lessons learned from alcohol. And by the way, I don't really care whether adults smoke marijuana or not, they're adults with fully formed brains and can do whatever they want. Frankly, I don't like when my daughter sees people smoke cigarettes, since it sends the message that it's okay, so I certainly don't want my daughter seeing or smelling adult smoke pot. And I don't want them seeing it lying around people's houses where it becomes normalized in the same way that people display liquor in their unlocked liquor cabinets in their living room and dining rooms. Milton doesn't need a pot shop of its own, there will be plenty of other cities and towns near us that will have them. But we don't need one right here in Milton, making access to pot that much easier. Thank you so much for voting yes on this article to ban recreational pot shops in Milton. You will be helping to not only keep my own daughter safe, but everyone's sons and daughters for a very long time to come. Thank you very much.
I'll start at the end here, sir, you?
Hello, Scott Matthews, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Four. I was looking at...
Speak up, please.
Sorry. Scott Matthews, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Four. I was looking at the comments on the article. It notes down here that we are putting up this law because the general zoning bylaw is unclear on what type of bylaw is necessary to impose the ban on marijuana establishments. I kind of felt that the way this is written, it kind of falls under the same kind of umbrella, because we have a final sentence here, that "This shall not be construed to affect the medical use of marijuana." And I'm just wondering what kind of criteria that we have to ensure that it doesn't apply to medicinal marijuana shops or the selling of it, or to accidentally construe someone trying to do a marijuana establishment as falling under medicinal marijuana? Do we have some kind of criteria that's in place to actually delineate the two?
Thank you for the question. Chairman, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. David Burns, Precinct Two, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. We have an existing bylaw in the books for medical marijuana, so that handles that.
Mr. McHetherton?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Joe McHetrick, Precinct One. And actually, I had a question, which perhaps should, could be discussed by someone, perhaps the Town Council, on that same point, is the relationship between the language that we have at page twenty-seven and the regulation that we've already done on medical marijuana. What troubles me, I'm having difficulty, is if you look at page twenty-seven with the language that's being suggested on prohibition on marijuana establishments, there's a whole description in the first few lines as to what is prohibited, and then there's the provision that was just referred to. "This prohibition shall not be construed to affect the medical use of marijuana as authorized by an act and by the Code of Massachusetts regulations." I'm just wondering whether that might be interpreted later on literally to say that it shall not affect the medical use of marijuana, but does it cover some of the other activities that would be associated with medical marijuana? And I wish I had had time to look at this provision of the Acts of twenty-twelve and CMR. Does that language cover what this gentleman was talking about, where this does not apply to the medical use of marijuana, or what, or all the other things that are associated in our bylaw or whatever with respect to medical marijuana? So I think there's a kind of an understatement here, or an implication that the language perhaps doesn't actually carry. So I just wanted to present that to the meeting and ask if anyone would have any comment on how that is supposed to work. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Flynn, can you answer that question?
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, that language is based upon templates, if you will, that have been discussed at length at seminars sponsored by the Attorney General's Office, the Massachusetts Attorney General's Office. But regardless of how that sentence reads, the enabling legislation makes it plain that if a town wishes to limit or ban recreational or non-medical marijuana, it cannot impact medical marijuana at all. So whatever this language says, the Town of Milton has no authority to take this, if Town Meeting votes either or both of these bylaws, that does not give the Town of Milton any authority to do anything differently with medical marijuana, because the law that authorized the town to put this to ballot clearly states that it doesn't apply to medical marijuana. So I don't think there's a problem here. There's no way that the Town of Milton subsequently could try to interpret, amend either of these bylaws to affect medical marijuana at all.
You have a follow-up, Mr. McHetrick?
Just to thank the Town Council for this nomination and that particular issue. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Sir?
I'm Ben Zoll, Town Meeting Member for Precinct Two, and I wish we were talking about the real drug crisis that we're facing. I've lost myself a close college friend to heroin use. Heroin is a problem. Marijuana use overwhelmingly does not lead to heroin, the studies are very clear about that. And in fact, in states that have legalized marijuana, there's a strong reduction in opioid-related deaths, opioid-related addiction, and police calls for opioid problems. We have a problem in Milton, which is drugs, yeah, but it's not marijuana, it's not this drug. What we're talking about right now, the message that we're sending to kids is that marijuana is as bad as heroin. It's not. Science shows that it's not as bad as heroin, and science also shows that marijuana is not a gateway drug, it doesn't lead to heroin deaths. I wish we were spending our time today talking about what are we going to do about the pharmacies that sell prescription pills, and how kids are getting their hands on prescription pills, and how they're getting hooked on drugs that can actually do real harm. I am thrilled that Massachusetts, as a state, has decided to decriminalize marijuana, because it's not as bad as heroin, it's not as bad as cocaine. In fact, it's not really that bad at all, and for a majority of adults who have diseases like cancer, and they can't keep their food down because of chemotherapy, marijuana is proven to help them overcome their symptoms, marijuana instead of prescription drugs. So I realize that I'm probably in the minority again tonight, as I was in the Town of Milton, although I have to say, when we say fifty-six percent of Miltonites voted in favor, or voted against, I would say that's still a lot of Miltonites that voted for legalization. And I'm not going to spend very long, again, on this, because I think that it's maybe a lost cause, but I just want to think about the message that we're sending to our kids tonight. It should not be that this is the same as that, it shouldn't be if you take a gummy, you should stick a needle in your arm. I mean, are we seriously saying that? Are we pretending that that's the same thing? It's not, it's clearly not. And as somebody who lost someone to opioid overdose, I feel like this is just the absolute wrong thing, and I think that it's just, it's a throwback to the past of the hysteria of marijuana. You know, we're seriously arguing this a second time, because we're not sure we've zoned it well enough, so that we got to keep it out. Let's not fool ourselves. If kids can get on the trolley, they can go into Dorchester, if you think that that's the way that it works. If you've been into a medical marijuana dispensary in Massachusetts, you would know, you have to show multiple forms of ID, there's absolutely no way that you could potentially get in there without being legally allowed to be there. So I am rising in opposition to this, and I'm rising in the hope that in the future we'll spend our time talking about the more serious opioid problem that we have in this town, and not a made-up one. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir? You have to speak for this motion.
Yeah, Kevin Hardy, Town Meeting, Precinct One. I just had a question, as a novice here. So twice in the comments section, it notes that how we vote, that it'll permanently ban these facilities. And so I know over the last ten years or so, attitudes towards this drug, and this has changed quite dramatically. And in ten years, it may change again. So I'm just, yeah, as a novice, you know, what are the, I mean, let's say in ten years we reconsider, and other towns have figured out how to do this well, they're making good revenues, it's safe, like what is the process for reconsidering? It's just a question I have. Thanks.
Town Council?
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, if that were the case, Town Meeting would have the authority to amend the bylaws, to either eliminate the bylaw or amend it as appropriate. So that would be a decision for a Town Meeting.
Mr. Collins?
Mr. Collins, Precinct Nine, Town Meeting Member. On September seventh of two thousand and seventeen, a major court case began in the district court of, federal district court in Massachusetts. That court case, if it holds and goes through four years from now, could very well... On September 7th of 2017, a major court case began in the district court of, federal district court in Massachusetts. That court case, if it holds and goes through four years from now, could very well be before the Supreme Court, supporting the standards in the United States, the legal standards today where marijuana and drugs are illegal. And upholding that illegal decision that we are talking about, we're talking about under the, this whole discussion that has been going on, and with Massachusetts being one of only eight states that has approved marijuana, is just because we're in a state that just doesn't truly, as a state overall, understand the real issues that are only ahead of a pin that are being talked about here. It is critically important for this town to send the right message, which is to very definitely not allow marijuana into our doorsteps if we can possibly do it. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak to this motion? This requires a majority vote, seeing none. All those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
The motion carries. We'll move to Article 7. Recommended that the town vote to amend Chapter 10 of the general bylaws, known as the zoning bylaw, by adding a new subsection T to Section 3 to read as follows. Subsection T, prohibition on marijuana establishments. In accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 94G, Section 3A2, all types of marijuana establishments as defined in Massachusetts General Laws, 94G, Section 1, and as many otherwise may be, excuse me, as may otherwise be defined by Massachusetts law or regulation, to include without limitation all marijuana cultivators, marijuana testing facilities, marijuana product manufacturers, marijuana retailers, onsite consumption at a business location, any other types of licensed marijuana-related businesses, and the conducting of any such activity for commercial purposes, by whichever name used, shall be prohibited within the town of Milton. This prohibition shall not be construed to affect the medical use of marijuana as expressly authorized by the provisions of Chapter 369 of the Acts of 2012 and 105 CMR 725.000, as the same may be amended from time to time. Does anyone wish to speak to this motion? This requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
The motion carries. I declare a two-thirds vote. I see 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7. Okay. We'll have a standing vote. Let me just get some proctors. We'll be right back. So folks, if I could have your attention. For Section 1, if you could listen for a minute, could I have Mary Reif and Kevin Hardy be the proctors on Section 1? Denny Swenson and Judy Orlando White on Section 2 in the center here, and Chris Tracus and Bob Sweeney, Chris Tracus and Bob Sweeney on Section 3 over here.
All right, we'll proceed to the standing count. All those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee, please stand.
Are all the proctors, have they completed their tally of the ayes?
Yes.
Ms. Orlando White, yes? Good? Good? Okay, you can sit down, please. All those opposed to the recommendation of the warrant committee, please rise. The proctors, if you could count the nos. Thanks, folks. So Section 1, could you call out your ayes and nos? That was 9 nos?
Yes.
Section 2, can you go to the mic, please? Thank you.
That'll be 69 yes and 23 no.
Thank you. And Section 3? So folks, the vote was, the ayes were 138, the nos were 37. That's a total of 175 votes. The ayes represent 78.8%, so the motion carries by a two-thirds vote. Off to Article 8. Recommended that the town vote to authorize the town clerk to make up-to-date, accurately-indexed print and digital copies of the town's general bylaws conveniently available to the public, to separately format and index Chapter 10, known as the zoning bylaws, and make up-to-date, accurately-indexed print and digital copies of the town zoning bylaws conveniently available to the public, to promptly incorporate and index future amendments to the bylaws in up-to-date print and digital copies of the general bylaws and the zoning bylaws, which shall be conveniently available to the public. I just want to make sure, just pointed out, that I did declare a two-thirds vote on Article 7. I thought I did, but if I didn't, I declared a two-thirds vote. So anyone wish to speak to Article 8?
I just want to say thank you to Sue. She does a terrific job. I think everybody should congratulate her.
Apparently it's unanimous. Yes, sir, Mr. Chinman?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Michael Chinman, Precinct 2. Does anyone really doubt that the town clerk currently is authorized to make up-to-date, accurately-indexed print and digital copies of the town's general bylaws? I'd like to know if the town clerk is at all confused about whether she's authorized to do that. And I agree that our town clerk does a fabulous job, and I think it's deplorable, the state of our bylaws, but I don't think this article will do a thing to make the state of our bylaws better. If it could be done, our town clerk would have done it. The problem here far exceeds authorization, which already exists. It already exists. The problem here is far bigger and deeper than that, and requires a solution different than this one, which will do nothing, because I'm sure the clerk already believes she's authorized to do this, and yet our bylaws are in a deplorable state through no fault of her own. She inherited the bylaws in a deplorable state. And they're so deplorable that different parts of the town are using different language in the bylaws, because nobody knows for sure what the bylaws say. This problem is serious. I think it needs a much more serious solution. What I would suggest is to vote this article down at the next town meeting in the spring. Hopefully, somebody, the board of selectmen, can propose that a moderator-appointed committee take over the bylaws, examine them, going back and see what the language really should be, because we're using different language for different departments. Nobody knows what the bylaws say, and it should be fixed, it has to be fixed. And if the clerk could do it, she would have already done it. So I recommend voting no on this, and let's fix it with a committee appointed by the moderator that we can institute at the next town meeting.
Ms. Galvin, you might wait. Mr. Mullin, do you want to speak to that question? Well, okay, fine. Ms. Galvin?
First of all, thank you very much. I appreciate your kind thoughts, and I do have some great news. I have spoken with the planning board, I've spoken with our town administrator and the board of selectmen, I've spoken with the chair of our bylaw review committee, and through a vote of town meeting and into the planning board's budget, we are authorized and moving forward with the codification process. General code will be the company we're using, so we are heading in the right direction. And I hope to be back, ooh, in May, not this May, with all of our bylaws codified, and we will be easily, they'll be easily searchable, and I think it will be a great benefit to all of us, our residents, and it'll be a wonderful move. So, thank you.
Mr. Mullin?
Peter Mullin, town meeting member, Precinct 2, and chairman of the town bylaw review committee. Back in 2015, we did vote to create a five-member moderator-appointed committee to review most of the bylaws in the town. We've been meeting, and we're in this process. We've had communications with Susan Galvin about this codification process. The bylaws go, there's lots of things in the bylaws that are outdated. We hope to go through all of them, review all of them, and we expect that we'll be back at some point with recommendations to eliminate bylaws that are no longer needed and to maybe add bylaws as the topics which are not addressed. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So I think there's no problem with a yes vote with regard to this article.
Mr. Whiteside?
Alexander Whiteside, chairman of the planning board, town meeting member, Precinct 9. Actually, the planning board has an unofficial copy of the zoning bylaw, which is accurate and entirely up-to-date, and so we're not, we know what we're dealing with. There are a couple things. There was an index that we adopted in... in the zoning a few years ago, and so it would be useful to, uh, just make clear that that's not the index for all time, so we recommend that you vote in favor of this article.
Does anyone else wish to speak to this article? Seeing none, this requires a majority vote. All those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. Article 9. Um, I'll read the article as here, but I've been informed there is a friendly amendment coming that's been, um, approved, but I'll just, uh, read it as stated. Recommended that if the town will vote to amend Chapter 10 of the general bylaws, known as the zoning bylaws, by designating Article 51 on the May 2017 warrant, paragraph, uh, parentheses, amend Chapter 10 of the general bylaws, Greater States, PUD, end parentheses, as subsection Q of Section 3 by designating Article 52 on the May 2017 warrant, amend Chapter 10 of the general bylaws, Parkway PUD, as subsection R of Section 3, and by designating Article 48 on the May 2017 warrant, temporary moratorium on marijuana establishments and marijuana retailers, as subsection S of Section 3. Uh, recognize Chairman of the Planning Board, Alex Whiteside.
Alexander Whiteside, Chairman of the Planning Board, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 9. This is a housekeeping article, however, there is a little bit of additional housekeeping. Uh, if you look at the first line of the recommendation, it says, "Recommended that if the town will vote to amend." It should say, the word if and the word will should be reviewed, uh, should be removed, so that the, uh, language is, "Recommended that the town vote to amend." Uh, as I say, this is, uh, pure housekeeping, we're giving specific section numbers to various, uh, articles passed in the past that didn't have them.
So the Planning Board, your request is to be made as a friendly amendment?
Yes.
And apparently the Planning Board accepts it as a friendly amendment, very good.
The, the Planning Board, uh, yeah, and the warrant committee has been advised, and, uh, I guess they can advise whether they accept it.
They are taking a vote on the friendly amendment?
George Asher, Chairman, Warrant Committee. The, uh, Warrant Commission, uh, Warrant Committee approves the recommendation.
Does anyone wish to speak to this article as amended? This requires a two-thirds vote. All in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee as amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. I declare a two-thirds vote. Article 10. Recommended that the town vote to amend Chapter 10 of the general bylaws, known as the zoning bylaws, by adding the following new subsection L laws, Section 7, L bicycle parking. In any district, any new building containing more than one residential unit shall have provision for convenient parking of bicycles. Such provision shall require covered parking for a number of bicycles at least equal to the number of units, provided that the Planning Board may modify the requirement for good cause. Any new building containing four or more residential units shall require indoor parking for a number of bicycles at least equal to the number of units, provided that the Planning Board may modify the requirements for good cause. Any existing building containing three or more residential units which undergoes renovations costing at least twenty-five percent of the amount of the assessed value shall have provision made for convenient parking of bicycles in number at least equal to the number of units, provided that the Planning Board may modify the requirement for good cause. Um, uh, recognize Chairman Whiteside, we did receive, uh, another small correction just before the meeting.
Alexander Whiteside, Chairman of the Planning Board, uh, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 9. If you look at the, um, page twenty-six of the warrant, under the words "Recommended", go down two lines where it said, it says "L laws, Section 7." The word "laws" should be deleted, and the word "to," T-O, should be substituted, and the Warrant Committee has agreed that this is a very friendly amendment. Bicycle parking on...
Mr. Whiteside, uh, it was "to."
Pardon?
There was a question, just clarifying, is the word "to," two? Pardon me? What, huh, Mr. Whiteside is still able to speak for a few minutes, and we'll, we'll get to this.
I, I, I'm not sure I...
Okay, you've offered a friendly amendment, do you have any other explanation of your...
That's, that's a friendly, yeah, that's a friendly amendment.
You've offered a friendly amendment. The Warrant Committee, Mr. Chair, do you have an opinion?
George Asher, Chairman, Warrant Committee. We met, uh, earlier this evening and approved this recommendation, so yes, we agree.
Thank you.
The Planning Board, uh, submitted this article and recommends its adoption. It, uh, has to do with bicycle parking for new multi-unit buildings, more than one, more than one unit. It doesn't apply to single-family houses, but if you have two or more units, then you've got to provide covered parking, and if you have four or more units, you have to provide indoor bicycle parking. And, uh, we feel that, uh, provision for bicycles is a sound planning strategy, and we hope that you agree.
Mr. Sloan? Uh, let's see. Tell you what, Mr. Sloan, you'd like to speak, I'll ask, I'll recognize you first. Mr. Sloan, you're, please.
Joe Sloan, Precinct 10. Um, and, uh, a member of the Bicycle Advisory Committee. Um, I thought we were going to defer to, uh, to Lee Tomo, who's the Chair, but, um, I think we'll combine our comments together. Um, uh, first off, we thank the Planning Board for, um, for entertaining this, uh, this article. Uh, bicycle parking is, um, is very important to folks who don't have the luxury of being able to put their bicycle in a garage or a basement, as many of us do. Um, and I'll leave some of those particular details to Lee. Um, one, one important thing that I want to add to the comments that Lee Tomo has is that, um, there's a current trend, and some of you may have heard this in the news recently, for, uh, developers of multi-unit residential facilities to pay between ten and twenty thousand dollars upfront to Amazon for a secure place for packages to be kept. And, um, and this is very quickly gon, going to force bicycles into corners of parking garages and such like that, so, um, I think this will also put us out ahead of, ahead of that in some situations where we can. Um, and, um, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna steal some thunder and use the opportunity also to, um, to let some of you know some of the amazing work that Lee Tomo does, um, as the Chairman of the Bicycle Advisory Committee, but really on behalf of everyone, um, in the town of Milton. He, he coordinates the needs of residents with the Planning Board, with the Town Administrator, with the Board of Selectmen, with the Police Department, with the Milton Public Schools. And if you have had, who have children in the town of Milton, ben, these children benefit from the Safe Roots to School Program. Um, uh, I mentioned the DPW, I mentioned the Traffic Commission, um, and outside of the town's own elected officials, uh, Lee coordinates on a regular basis with the Massachusetts Department of Transportation and with the DCR. Um, any intersection improvements that happen in the town of Milton, Lee is right there advocating for everyone, and even though he, he wears the title of the Chair of Bicycle Advisory Committee, everyone benefits from all of this work, whether you ride a bicycle or not, because it's making the town a safer place, and so I want to use the opportunity to publicly thank Lee for these efforts.
Chair recognizes, uh, Lee Tomo. Would you just introduce yourself and your, uh, address?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator, thank you very much, Joe. I, uh, stand here kind of, uh, blushing and a little embarrassed, but, uh, um, there's a lot that goes on in, in the town, and, uh, I do try to stand up and make sure that we have safety improvements for, for all the residents, the students, uh, it's not just about bicycling, but for everyone. Anyway, um, once again, I'm Lee Tomo, uh, resident from Precinct 10 and Chair of the Bicycle Advisory Committee. I'd like to speak in favor of Article 10. We, on the Bike Committee, asked the Planning Board to draft this article with the goal of encouraging the inclusion of indoor or covered parking to protect people's bikes from the weather and from theft, especially in apartments and condos which have limited floor space and which often prohibit storage of bikes in the residences. And for those, uh, residences, uh, that don't restrict bikes, it's still awkward and difficult to carry bikes upstairs in crowded elevators, or to wheel them past other people down narrow hallways, so that's why we feel that this article is important. So, over the past several years, the town and the state have done a lot to make Milton safer for biking. We've long had trails connecting to multiple schools, uh, we have new bike lanes thanks to the town and the state, and we have this scenic new Nippon City River Greenway Trail Extension. In a few more years, that trail will extend across Dorchester to Southie and eventually to downtown. For many people, especially children and teenagers, bicycles are transportation, and they need to be able to use them on a day-to-day basis. Have you noticed that on a typical day, if you go to Pierce Middle School, about fifty kids are biking there? Uh, Dr. Pavlicek recently said that the demand was so high that they had to order another rack. So, it's good for the kids' health, people's health in general, and it helps to reduce traffic congestion, and with our new trails, we're seeing more and more people biking every year. I believe that this article allows flexibility for the Planning Board to enforce or waive the terms as they see fit, so it should serve as a public benefit, yet not be an undue burden on homeowners or developers. So, on behalf of the Bicycle Advisory Committee, I ask you to support this article. Thank you.
Ma'am?
Hi, Lisa Murphy, Precinct 1. I have a couple of questions. How many, did you do any analysis on how many people? Maybe that should go to, uh, Mr. Whiteside. Uh, um, did you do any analysis on how many people would actually use this? How many people actually have bicycles in, in the units that will be affected by this?
Ma'am, do you have a number of questions, or just a one?
It's really one question.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, and then, I do have one other question. After this, but I think one by one is better.
The Planning Board feels that if you provide the spaces, they'll be used.
I'm sorry?
We didn't do a specific study, we felt if you provide these spaces, they will be used.
I...
Human nature.
I, I, I'm not sure I would agree with that, but how, what is the cost per unit for this?
In, in, in the new buildings, it's hard, it's hard to say, it shouldn't be significant, though.
But we don't know.
I, it would, it would undoubtedly differ in every, in every case.
It may differ, but again, there is a cost to this, whether or not you have...
Ma'am?
Yes?
Yes, if we could avoid the back and forth.
Okay.
Sue, do you have the additional, uh...
So I'll just make that a statement, there is a cost to this, whether or not a person has a bicycle now, they have to pay for this. Uh, and, and I, I don't particularly think that that's, it's right to force that onto people. Um, this is what I call a big brother amendment, um, and so I'm going to vote against it.
Before I get to you, does anyone else wish to speak to this amendment before we go back? Yes? Mr. Hajar?
John Hajar, Precinct 9. I also urge a no vote, it's not the role of government to tell a private developer or any private individual that he should, uh, build a bike storage or, or, uh, any other, uh, like-kind storage, uh, it's the market that determines these factors. Let a private individual determine what's best, not government, it's not the role of government. Thank you.
Mr. Gais?
Cheryl Tagayes, Precinct 9. Our zoning code currently puts requirements for us to require parking spaces for all developments. We like to encourage alternative modes of transportation, we should also mandate the bicycle parking. Thank you.
If no one else, Mr. Sloan will, you're all set, okay. Does anyone else wish to speak to this motion? Seeing none, this requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
I declare a two-thirds vote. We'll move to Article 11. Recommended that the town vote to amend Chapter 10 of the general bylaws, known as the zoning bylaws, by adding the following third sentence to Section 4. In a valid, pre-existing, non-conforming, singular, two-family residential structure, an existing dimensional non-conformity may be extended by special permit within the front, side, or rear setback areas, provided that the intrusion into the setback area is no greater than the average intrusion into the relevant setback area of existing singular, two-family residential structures within three hundred feet, and provided that the extension of such an existing dimensional non-conformity will be architecturally consistent with the existing structure and neighboring structures, as well as meeting the usual requirements for issuance of a special permit set out in Section 9.C. Mr. Whiteside?
Alexander Whiteside, Chairman of the Planning Board, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 9. If you look in the comment where it talks about a special permit process from the Planning Board, it, it's, it is a special permit process from the Board of Appeals. They're the, uh, they're the people who do this sort of work. As you know, many dwellings in Milton were constructed before the adoption of zoning. When zoning was adopted, many of these pre-existing dwellings were not in compliance with the new zoning rules, especially the rules on setbacks from lot lines. These non-compliances were most prevalent in the town's resident C district, for which under Section 6B through D, provision was made for a twenty-foot front yard setback, a ten-foot side yard setback, and a thirty-foot rear yard setback. Dwellings which encroach on these setback areas are termed "non-conforming dwellings", but are grandfathered under zoning. Many homeowners would like to add living space to their dwellings, and often find that the layout of their dwellings are such that the desired addition will encroach into a setback area. Before the homeowner can construct an addition in the setback area, the homeowner must secure a variance, showing to the Board of Appeals that there is something unique and special about the homeowner's lot. Or, unique and special about the homeowner's dwelling. He's got to show that enforcement of the zoning would involve hardship, financial or otherwise, and that desirable relief can be granted without detriment to the public good, and without derogation from the intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw. Since many houses... Since many houses share the same problem, it's hard to satisfy the variance requirement that there be a unique situation, and this zoning amendment attempts to address that. The standards for securing a variance are extremely rigorous, and many people feel that these standards are too rigorous and are badly suited to the determination whether to approve a homeowner's request to add an addition to the homeowner's dwelling in the setback area. Article 11 is a measure of very limited applicability, designed to address a situation where the homeowner's dwelling currently encroaches on a setback area, and the homeowner wants to construct an addition, all a part of which would be in the setback area. An allowable addition could be no closer to the lot line than the existing encroachment, but it could be longer. In other words, it can't get any close to the lot line, but it can run along the building at greater length. If you have an encroaching porch that goes out five feet, if you've got a special permit under this, the encroachment, the five-foot encroachment into the setback area could be extended along the length of the house. This zoning has a number of conditions attached to it, and one of which is that before the Board of Appeals can approve an encroachment, issue a special permit approving an encroachment into the setback area, there has to be a showing that other dwellings within 300 feet have a similar encroachment. The average encroachment of the setback area of buildings within 300 feet will determine what would be permissible under this particular provision. In trying to show, the homeowner would have the responsibility for showing what the average encroachment of existing buildings is, and we believe that the GIS system will be adequate in permitting these homeowners in making the determination. Once they determine what the average encroachment is, they can go to the Board of Appeals, and if they can show that there will be no substantial detriment to adjoining homeowners, that the addition that they propose is architecturally coherent and in keeping with the area, then the Board of Appeals would be authorized to issue a special permit. The Planning Board finds that this is, or believes that this is quite a...
Excuse me, Alex? Just, you know, four minutes. Thanks.
Done. That this is a limited provision. It's got some fairly rigorous standards, but that it should prove helpful in some cases. And it certainly is an improvement over making the homeowner seek a variance. So we recommend that you approve it.
Virginia Donahue-King, Precinct 3. I'm also a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals. I'm one of the three permanent members out of a nine-member board. I've been on this board for quite some time, for almost 20 years, and my practice in my own law office has given me a lot of information and experience in this as well. I'm still unclear from this on a couple of things, and I would like some answers before I address everything else, because that could put some things to sleep for me. I have four questions. What is the entity that is granting these special permits? What is the requirement for notice to neighbors of any hearing of the proposed addition? Is notice given to neighbors after the permit has been granted? And under the current process of obtaining a permit or variance, allows for appeal by neighbors who are adversely affected by a permit or variance? Will there be an appeal process under this new system?
Mr. Whiteside, do you have all those?
The Board of Appeals will be the entity that does these special permits, and the Board of Appeals already has procedures for special permits, because it is the special permit granting authority under the zoning bylaw in numerous situations. And all the usual rules will apply, as well as the notice requirements will be just as with all other special permits, similar to what the variance requirements are. Appeals will be, once the zoning board issues a decision, it can be appealed under the usual rules for appealing special permits. It's not, we're not making any new procedural changes. We're just creating a new special permit.
Ms. King, I think I heard two of four. Did you get your other two answered? Notice and will be, when does a notice happen? Notifying neighbors? You're okay? If you have to speak, if you have to follow up, can you get to the mic?
I'm trying to formulate my question. If there's anybody else that wants to speak on this, will I formulate my question? That would be good.
No, you can have, it's your rebuttal. No, not rebuttal, but your follow-up question.
Well, I do have, I have some concern with this. I appreciate the idea that we want to streamline the process, and if this is only to get at the point that it gives the Board of Appeals a grounds to grant a variance or permit as opposed to, you know, for something other than hardship? If it's, you know, we routinely grant things that are de minimis in making an existing nonconformity greater without showing a hardship. Is this meant so that we can't? And those decisions, by the way, would probably be overturned in the courts if somebody was so interested in doing that. And we only do that when there are neighbors, there are no neighbors, that are against it. So my question is, is this just to allow us greater authority to grant the variance when there is no particular hardship per se, or soil conditions, or whatever that would make a variance necessary?
Mr. Whiteside?
The answer is yes. This is, this article, we had a number of lawyers appear before us over the years saying we've got to do something along these lines, and we've put out this language, we advertised it, we asked the lawyers for comments, and didn't get any. But the answer is that we want to remove the necessity of there being a hardship, and we want, as you say, that if you grant these things under the various procedure, you may be on soft ground, and this is a much better foundation for a decision.
Thank you. Sir in the yellow jacket, did you wish to speak down the front? No, did not, okay. Ms. McCetrick, I think you were next.
Yeah, I understand this. I did give you some comments, by the way. Mary McCetrick, Precinct 1, and I'm an attorney. I do occasionally appear before the Board of Appeals. I understand the purpose of this to be, to provide a limited process for a special permit to be granted in some situations in which currently you have to apply for a variance. And that situation is the one in which you have a pre-existing nonconforming structure, you want to build an addition, but you want to build your addition further along the side of your house, which is now currently treated by the Building Commissioner as a new nonconformity and which he is requiring a variance application for. I'm not disagreeing with that, but that's what's happening. As a result, the Board of Appeals has a lot of applications for variances, and they're granting a lot of variances without, you know, without necessarily having situations in all of those instances where all the criteria for a variance are met. So I think what this bylaw attempts to do is to bring into line the actual practice of a Board of Appeals in this town with a bylaw provision that sets the appropriate standard. That this is a standard that they're applying, you know, on a de facto basis. It doesn't stand up on appeal. It's a difficult situation for everybody, for the applicants. And it's somewhat unfair, because we have so many houses, especially in C districts, that are pre-existing nonconforming structures. Everybody wants to build additions, and the process becomes Byzantine at best, when you have to go through a variance application. I do have one question, if I may. May I ask a question? If the only purpose of this is the limited application in which an applicant wants to build an addition which will be still within the setback, the nonconforming setback that exists, but he wants to extend it further along the side of the house, then why do you need the comparison? Why do you need this analysis of the existing nonconformities within 300 feet? I mean, it's already an existing nonconformity in the house, so perhaps Mr. Whiteside, or I don't know, we should address it, but that's my question.
Well, if you have a deck that, say, sticks out five feet into the setback, the side setback area, and you want to build an addition in this area, it certainly would be, you'd be creating a larger nonconformity. I mean, your deck may be nonconforming, but your two-story addition would be much more nonconforming, and the Building Commissioner takes the position that it would be a new nonconformity. So a variance currently would be necessary if you wanted to do this. If this passes, then you could seek a special permit.
Mr. Corcoran?
Ned Corcoran, Precinct 3. Like Mary and I, spent a lot of time before the Board of Appeals and the Planning Board. I didn't generally comment on this before the Planning Board, because I generally agree with the provision. I haven't done a scientific analysis, but in my sense is that more than 50% of the houses in Milton are somehow nonconforming. Huge swaths of Milton were built before zoning was even thought of, and lots of those houses exist right on the front yard lot line, or on the side yard lot line, or encroach into the rear lot line. They're houses that were built for another time. Families have difficulty adjusting those houses, reinvesting in those houses, and creating and improving those houses to meet more modern living requirements, when they have to think about getting a variance, because they're adding four feet or five feet along the side going towards the rear of the property, along what's already a side yard imperfection. So it is a softening of the otherwise a requirement that you seek a variance. A variance, as has been said, is legally impossible, except under very rare circumstances. It is almost legally impossible to secure a variance. And if one of your neighbors opposes it for reasons that may or may not have anything to do with the merit of the improvement to the dwelling, the Board of Appeals generally votes no. It creates difficult situations of almost neighbor-on-neighbor crime, associated with trying to get neighbors to agree that this six-foot addition off the rear of the house is probably going to increase everybody's value, because it's going to make it better. It takes away the requirement to prove a hardship. It otherwise meets all of the requirements for establishing a special permit. Those rules are well-understood, they're well-laid out in the general laws, they're well-laid out in case law. It is, it is, so at the end, it is a softening of a difficult requirement, and I wholeheartedly endorse it, and would urge this body to vote yes.
Mr. King?
My name is Jim Coyle, Precinct 71. Technical question here. The first sentence mentions single or two-family residential structure. There are many homes that have a garage that's separate, that's not even anywhere near the house. I mean, how do you handle separate additional structures on the same property? I think the wording needs to be improved to be more all-inclusive, because I don't think it addresses the entire problem. And I think the article has a lot of merit. I support it in general. However, I think that some wording changes should be proved to be, to show the more practical things that need to be solved out there, such as detached garages that are, might be right on the property line. There's many in mind in East Milton like that, that, people that have those issues to deal with, so.
Is that a question for the Planning Board?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Whiteside?
We address the matter of dwellings, and accessory buildings are, they have lesser setbacks, they have different issues, but we certainly could look at it in the future. But I don't see that it's, you can fold accessory structures into this particular, particular article. And your attached garage, I believe, is part of your dwelling. It's your unattached garage, is that become accessory structures.
Do you have the follow-up, or not? No? Okay. Mr. Furze, I think we'll go to a vote.
Always nice to have the last word. So, a couple of things. I appreciate the clarifications given by the attorneys about special permits versus variances. I think it's important that we remember in this room that not everybody is a practitioner of real estate when we're talking about zoning, and that is a really important distinction for anyone that's trying to undergo any construction project, is whether you need a special permit, which allows the zoning board or the planning board, depending on which municipality you're in, to have some discretion versus a, excuse me, a variance which has a very specific legal test, as Mr. Corcoran pointed out. So thanks for the clarification. Hopefully that is understandable to the majority in the room now. I just wanted to get up and point out something. Last night, this body basically put 50 to 60% of our town under a preservation restriction, which would allow anybody to get a demolition delay if their homes were proven to be historically qualifying for it. And this bylaw would make it easier for residents to maintain their existing homes, rather than having to take down a pre-existing nonconforming structure and try to make it comply with existing setbacks in order to make an older home maybe worthy of preservation from a historic standpoint, suitable for modern-day living. So I think it would be a little bit difficult for this body to take two positions at once. One would be that we really want to preserve our historic housing stocks, and two, we want to make it as difficult as possible for you to manage those housing stocks to a modern-day standard. So please think about that as you're considering your vote, and I would strongly endorse a yes vote tonight. Thank you. (applause)
Very good. We'll go to a vote. This requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. I declare a two-thirds vote. Onto Article 12. It's a lengthy article. I'd like to, second. All those in favor of waiving the reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. We will waive the reading. I've been informed by the chairman of the warrant committee, there is a slight approved revision to the article. If we could turn to your page 35. At the very top, you'll see paragraphs or sentences that start with the letters C, D, E, H, and I. The change is to alter the paragraphs that start with H and I and renumber them alphabetically so they read F and G. So at the top of that page, with this approved revision, would read C, D, E, F, and G. The warrant committee voted on this prior to tonight, so this is the revised recommendation before the body. With that, I'll recognize Chairman, let me see, Chairman Whiteside, because I think this was submitted by the planning board. Yes?
I think I was dreaming or something, but did you mention about we're changing the appeal structure?
I did not, because it had not been approved by the warrant committee yet.
Well, we are changing the appeal structure from the Board of Appeals to the selectmen. And we already have a provision. If you look on page 32, we have two alternate paragraph Ds. One is appeal to the Board of Appeals, and one is appeal to the Board of Selectmen. And the warrant committee initially chose the Board of Appeals, but the Board of Appeals indicated that they thought the selectmen would be a better appeals body, appeals adjudicator. And I think the selectmen have agreed, and I think the warrant committee agrees.
So just a clarification from the warrant committee. Had you already voted on this prior to this meeting?
No.
No, thank you, I didn't think so. Okay. So we have a friendly amendment from the planning board. I'll make sure everyone understands. So if you look on page 37, and you see paragraph D, that will be replaced in its entirety in this amendment with page 32, the paragraph that reads "Appeal to Board of Selectmen." So that "Appeal to Board of Selectmen" on page 32 will get lifted and dropped onto page 37 to replace the paragraph D that's currently in your warrant. Am I have that right, Mr. Whiteside?
That's right.
Thank you. So that's offered as a friendly amendment. The warrant committee has the recommendation, the motion on the floor. If they could quickly tell us what they think.
While they do it, I could...
Fill the time?
I could kill some time, yeah. The existing bylaw on signs is, is not good at all. It doesn't provide for a procedure. It, the, if you want a sign, you go to the Board of, you go to the building commissioner, and the building commissioner looks at it, and if it's, this is in the business district, if it's an illuminated sign, the building commissioner can't approve it. If it's not a illuminated sign and is small, the building commissioner theoretically could approve it, but I don't know when the last time was that the building commissioner approved a sign in the business district. Usually what happens is that the building commissioner denies it. The sign review committee, it gets informally reviewed or referred to the sign review committee. The sign review committee makes a recommendation to the selectmen, and then the selectmen determine whether or not to allow the sign. And we have a booklet called the Design and Facade, let's see, the Sign and Facade Design Handbook. And that has a number of standards in it, but it isn't nowhere incorporated into, into the procedure. So the selectmen are basically given the ability to determine what signs should be allowed and what signs should not be allowed without significant standards. So what we've got here is an effort to establish a rational procedure. You go to the building commissioner, applying for a sign. The building commissioner indicates that he's going to want an electronic submission. He's going to get it, is going to have a number of things that we specified together with other things that the sign review committee may specify. It'll go to the sign review committee, and then the sign review committee will have the ability to render a decision, which they will then send to the building. It'll be a draft decision, which they'll send to the building commissioner. And it would either be to allow the sign, deny the sign, or approve the sign with conditions. Goes to the building commissioner, and if the building commissioner is on board, he will, if it's, if the sign review committee says approve the sign, he will issue a permit. If the sign review committee indicates he should deny the sign, he will issue a denial. And if the sign review committee thinks that there are conditions which could be met, an approval with conditions could be, a permit with conditions could be rendered. Then if the applicant or one of the named town boards feels that the sign review committee and the building commissioner have gotten it wrong, then they, under the procedure that we are suggesting, can go to the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen will themselves establish the specific procedure. We don't, we don't try and say what the specific appeals procedure would be, but it would be a hearing with notice. The, the proposed amendment specifically references the sign review committee, as I've mentioned. Currently, it's nowhere mentioned in the bylaw. And it also references the Sign and Facade Design Handbook, because this is going to be the bible. This is going to have the standards that are, will control signs in Milton. And it will be a document, we have a document which is some years old, needs, needs revision, but it's a pretty good document. It has a lot of, a lot of thoughtful material in it. And the sign review committee will be charged in updating it, and the selectmen will be charged with approving it. So in this bylaw, we define a number of things: principal signs, wall signs, projecting signs, freestanding signs, secondary signs. But we're not, we're not trying to establish all the rules here. We're trying to establish a rational framework so that these decisions can be made expeditiously and objectively.
Mr. Whiteside, you have four minutes.
So I think that, I think that that pretty well covers what we're trying to do here. We, we think you should adopt it.
Warrant committee, do we have your opinion, please?
George Asher, Chair, Warrant Committee. Mr. Moderator, the warrant committee approves the recommended change.
Thank you. So we have an amended motion in front of you. Serge, I'd like to speak to this recommendation.
Larry Johnson from Precinct 1. I'm also a member of the sign review committee, and I'm rising in support of this. I've been on the sign review committee for a few years, and it's more, it's a lot more interesting than you think. And it's actually really, it's really a lot of fun. But one of the issues we have is that, well, you know, these signs will come before us, we'll approve them, we'll discuss them, we'll make our recommendations to the selectmen. And then, you know, a couple of months down the road, we'll drive by the business that came before us, and we'll see that, you know, the same nonconforming signs, the same, you know, signs that we had already discussed, or rejected, or recommended improvements to, or changes, are still there. And I can think of three different businesses where every time I drive by, I think, ah, there's that sign again, you know, it's still there. And the issue is, of course, that we don't have any, that our recommendations don't have any teeth. There's not a lot of, you know, there's no law behind them. And it would be nice if we were to pass this bylaw, and, and it would give a little bit of weight behind, weight to, to our recommendations, and I could see, we could finally see some of those changes. I think it would really, really do a lot to greatly improve the town, the look of the town and the feel of the town. So that's what I have to say. So I urge a yes vote for this. Thank you.
Seeing no other speakers, this requires a two-thirds vote. All in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
I declare a two-thirds vote. That was a sound of rounding the corner coming into the homestretch. Article 13. To see if the town will vote to amend Chapter 10 of the general bylaws known as the zoning bylaws in Section 3B-3B, by striking the comma and the ensuing words in that "Any such temporary advertising sign on premises shall be no larger than the size which be permissible if the premises were located in the business district," by striking the comma and adding the word "and" between the words "valid business use" and the word "that." And by adding the following two sentences, "No temporary sign shall have a face area the area of the face of the sign, in excess of 16 square feet for each face, and shall not extend more than five feet in any direction provided that for good cause the town administrator may permit a greater area length and or width. No temporary sign should be erected within 10 feet of an abutters lot line or so as to obstruct the sightlines necessary for traffic safety. As amended, Section 3B-3B shall read, temporary signs are permitted provided that a temporary sign advertising any commodities, including but not limited to goods, food, and services, shall be displayed only on premises where such commodities are sold, rented, or otherwise made available to the public, pursuant to a valid business use in that any such temporary advertising sign shall be displayed for no more than 45 days. No temporary sign shall have a face area the area of the face of the sign, in excess of 16 square feet for each face, and shall not extend more than five feet in any direction provided that for good cause the town administrator may permit a greater area length and or width. No temporary sign should be erected within 10 feet of an abutters lot line or so as to obstruct sightlines necessary for traffic safety and to act on anything relating thereto." This is amended by the planning board. The recommendation, as you see, is that the town vote to refer the article to the planning board for further study. Does anyone wish to speak to this recommendation? Mr. Whiteside, are you eager, or?
I'm eager to have it recommitted. That's actually the recommendation of the planning board. We, we feel that this is, needs some more work. We've, we've had an opinion from town council, and we'll have something in, in May.
Seeing no one wishing to speak to this article, this requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the recommendation of... Oh, I'm sorry, my mistake. You're right, there's a prior note. You're correct. This requires a majority vote. Thank you. Recommended that the town vote to refer the article, all in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
The motion carries. Article 14. To see if the town will vote to amend Chapter 10 of the general bylaws known as the zoning bylaws by adding the following new subsection I to section, sorry, one, section one to section four entitled Maintenance of Buildings. Maintenance of Buildings. In all zoning districts, all buildings shall be maintained in a structurally sound and safe condition by their owners and act on anything related to thereto submitted by the planning board. It's recommended that the town vote to refer this article to the planning board for further study. Mr. Burns?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. David Burns, Precinct 2, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. Before any discussion on this article, I just wanted to quickly recognize and thank the warrant committee for their efforts. There was quite a bit of information here on this Fall Town Meeting. There's quite a few new members. I think we owe them a big round of applause and welcome them. Thank you very much.
Anyone wish to speak to this? Mr. Whiteside? We should just get you a chair up front.
The planning board recommends that you vote to refer this article back to the planning board.
Seeing no one wishing to speak to this article, requires a majority vote. All in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. Entertain a motion to adjourn?
No.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, no. We will, we are adjourned. I will see you on May 7.